adequate notice has been given in accordance with the sunshine law. Notice was published on December 7, 2016, the New Jersey Star-Ledger, the official newspaper for the township of Springfield, and posted in the Annex Building on December 30, 2016. Let's rise for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Diane Sampulis?
I am here.
Deputy Mayor Maria Masala?
Here.
Mr. Jeff Tiger?
Here.
Ms. Claudia Saraceno?
Here.
Dr. Kristen Lovazo, absent.
Mr. Michael Gonzalez?
Here.
Ms. Sylvia Van Balski?
Here.
Ms. Tara Benigno?
Yes.
Vice Chair Paul Snyder?
Here.
Chairman Mary Fernandez?
Here.
Sir, we have a forum.
Okay. Before we do get started, I'd like to make an announcement that application 4-2017-7, the Vialli Holdings LLC will be carried to the December meeting and they will notice. So if anyone from the public was here for that particular application, it will be in December and again you will be receiving another notice. Okay. Can I get the approval of the minutes of October 2017?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for October 2017.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Any abstentions? Resolutions. May I get a motion for the first resolution from Verizon Wireless?
I'd like to make a motion to approve application 2017-2, I'm sorry, 2017-D, Verizon Wireless, 1 Cornell Parkway Block 3903 Block 42, waiver of site plan, cell tower upgrades.
You can second.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, no, roll call, I'm sorry.
Mayor Sampulis?
Yes.
Mr. Tiger?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Masala?
Yes.
Ms. Saraceno?
Yes.
Ms. Van Balski?
Yes.
Ms. Benigno?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schneider?
Yes.
Chairman Fernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes.
May I have a motion for the second application from Verizon Wireless?
I'll make a motion to approve application 2017-E, Verizon Wireless, 51 Brown Avenue, Block 3102, Block 4, for waiver of site plan for cell tower upgrades.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Mr. Tiger?
Yes.
Mayor Sampulis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Masala?
Yes.
Ms. Saraceno?
Yes.
Ms. Van Balski?
Yes.
Ms. Benigno?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schneider?
Yes.
Chairman Fernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Move to applications, which, application 9-2017-7 on 2017 Cleveland Springfield LLC. Preliminary and final site plans, if you may begin.
I'll stand just to start and then I'll sit if that's okay.
Yeah, you can have a seat anywhere there if you like and the microphones should be working.
Okay, great. Good evening, everyone, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Gail Price. I'm a partner and principal with the law firm of Price, Me, Schulman, and D'Ammannio in Woodcliff Lake, and I'm here this evening in connection with our client's application for preliminary and final major site plan together with certain variance relief, hopefully to gain your approval in order to construct a Wawa convenience retail store together with fuel sales on six different properties that we've managed over the course of the last several years to work very diligently on to assemble, to allow for this use. The site will be significantly upgraded with a full range of site improvements, landscaping, lighting, drainage. We've had the pleasure of working with your professional staff to try to ensure that we are addressing details relative to the ordinance here in Springfield, and we have worked very hard with DOT. We have an application pending for new traffic signalization at Morris and Cleveland, which I understand is something that the township has been interested in, in obtaining, and our client will be moving ahead with that and undertaking that new signalization upon receipt of approval for the project. So I think that that'll allow for a significant traffic improvement in the area which should be deemed a positive benefit for the community, and hopefully you'll agree with that after you hear the application. We have three witnesses this evening. I have our civil engineer, our traffic engineer, and our professional planner. I don't expect significant traffic testimony, it's a permitted use, but I just want to have Mr. Steiger confirm that we've addressed the, your planner and your engineer's concerns and give you a little history on the DOT application. But I think our civil engineer is the best witness to start with, so if I could call him and have him sworn in, we can proceed with his testimony. Mr. Martell.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear and tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And if you could please give your first and last name for the record, spelling your last name?
Yes, for the record, Jeffrey Martell, M-A-R-T-E-L-L, the firm of Stonefield Engineering and Design in Rutherford, New Jersey.
Mr. Martell, would you please give the board the benefit of your educational and professional background?
Sure. First and foremost, I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey as well as several other surrounding states, bachelor's degree in civil engineering from University of Delaware, master's degree from NJIT, practicing licensed professional for approximately 12 years, testified before an excess of 75 land use boards as a professional civil engineering witness, also hold additional licenses including professional planning and certified municipal engineer. However, this evening intended to just supply professional engineering testimony, and I've been involved with approximately 40-plus similar applications involving convenience stores and fuel sales.
And you're office prepared the set of site plans that are pending before the board for consideration this evening involving the property, which I'll just run down for identification purposes, lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 15, 16, and 17, all in Block 502?
Correct.
And you're prepared to give testimony both in support of those plans and in response to the professional reports that we've received?
Correct.
I'd ask that Mr. Martell be accepted in the area of civil engineering in connection with this matter.
That's fine.
Okay.
Great. So before we get into detailed testimony, just by way of introduction, as Ms. Price stated, we're here for preliminary and final major site plan on what constitutes lots 1 through 4 and 15 to 17 in Block 502. They're all located in the GC zone. We do intend to consolidate those parcels as part of this application. The sum of all those individual lots is approximately 1.6 acres. As part of our application documents, we submitted a survey, site plan, stormwater report, EIS, traffic impact, architectural plans, photos. The applicant also conducted soil studies, a geotechnical investigation, environmental, as well as title searches. What you see before you this evening is a product of two-plus years of planning and development of the project. The applicant was able to assemble multiple lots as part of this development. There is a two-year history, I won't bore the board, but we did consider advancing this application without one of the lots that is part of the present application, but in some pre-planning phases, we thought that that would not be in the best interests of the applicant or the tenant in this case, so the developer went and inquired an additional lot. We've also met with the township traffic safety officials on two separate occasions. We've met with the DOT on two separate occasions. We've spoken to the county. And what you have before you, I think, represents a significant time and effort to do what the applicant and our team feel is the right thing and put the best foot forward in terms of the applicant and the tenant, which in this case would be Wawa. Along the way, we've also made some additional changes and advancements, but the most significant of which, and you'll hear a couple times this evening, is that this application includes the proposed signalization of the intersection of Morris Turnpike and Cleveland Place. So we understood that traffic would be a core discussion and review topic as part of any application on this project, and a lot of our pre-planning efforts were focused on that. So with that said, I'd like to briefly describe the existing conditions. I'm sure the board is very well aware of the property, but just very briefly, I'd like to review, and in doing so, I will use an exhibit entitled Regional Aerial Exhibit Sheet R1, and it was prepared by Stonefield Engineering. It's dated 10/26/2017, and I'd like to mark that as Exhibit A1. For orientation purposes, north is to the top of the page, the parcel, including all of the seven lots that I listed, is outlined in yellow towards the center of the page. There are four lots fronting on Morris Turnpike, which of course is under DOT jurisdiction, also identified as Route 124. There are three separate commercial structures along those lots as well as various parking To the west of the property is Cleveland Place, and then to the south of the property is Morris Avenue. There are three additional lots that essentially front on Morris Avenue. There are three principal structures on those lots, two of which their primary use is single-family residential, and the third of which southeast corner is also used as a commercial salon. All of the proposed structures, as well as the pavement, curb, and all of the physical hardscape improvements are all proposed to be removed as part of this project. In addition, we'll be removing all of the existing driveways. There are a total of, I think, eight. There are three on Morris Turnpike, two on Cleveland, and three more on Morris Avenue. We would be removing all of those driveways as well as the sidewalk around the perimeter of the property and reconstructing those to support the proposed development. With that said, I'd like to jump into the proposed site plan and introduce what I'll mark as Exhibit A2, which is a site plan exhibit prepared by Stonefield Engineering. It is identical to Sheet 5 of 23 in your site plan set. However, for the purpose of presentation here this evening, we've colorized it, overlaid the landscaping, and added an aerial image underneath for the purpose of clarity here in the discussion. In terms of the site planning aspects, we do have three property frontages, and we are aware that the property is readily visible from almost all sides. It's almost 360 degrees in this place, in this particular case. As such, we've designed a facility that has a dual entrance proposed convenience store. So the convenience store is proposed to be 5,585 square feet. It will have an entrance on the south side facing Morris Avenue, and it will have an entrance on the north side facing Morris Turnpike. There are a total of 50 parking spaces that are proposed to support the convenience store, a majority of which are located immediately adjacent to the building, which have a row of bollards between the proposed building and sidewalk for pedestrian safety. These parking spaces immediately adjacent to the building are what we would consider would have the most use and probably the highest turnover, so they're all designed at 10-foot wide by 20 feet deep. They all have the bollards in front of them, and they're all supposed to be paved in concrete, which is believed to be a more durable pavement product suitable for their use. In addition, we have some parking stalls around the perimeter, along Morris Avenue and Cleveland Place. The row on Morris Avenue is also 10 by 20. The row on Cleveland Place is 10 by 18. There are three additional parking spaces all the way to the north of the site. Two of those are intended for the air station, and those are 11 feet wide, a little bit wider, just to accommodate, you know, act of taking the hose and getting it to the proper tire to fill your tire. In terms of the fuel sales, as part of the retail extension of the Wawa, there are six fueling islands housed within a canopy. There are three underground storage tanks, two are 22,000 gallon and one is 20,000 gallons. They're located immediately adjacent or to the north of the proposed canopy, as is customary with fuel pumps, and there are underground storage tanks. In terms of access to the site, I mentioned we'd be removing the existing driveways. We are proposing to consolidate access points in accordance with DOT County and current township standards. That includes one right-in, right-out driveway on Morris Turnpike, which is the subject of a DOT application, two driveways under the jurisdiction of the township on Cleveland Place, and one drive Morris Avenue, which is strictly a left-in. As I'm sure the board is aware, Morris Avenue is a one-way roadway heading east. It's difficult, left-in, left-out driveways are not the typical driveway design. Typically, you enter a facility on the right and, you know, you anticipate driveways on the right. So when you have driveways on the left and you think about that entrance and exit, it's not always the most anticipated scenario. So as such, we're not proposing any exit maneuvers on Morris Avenue, as we thought that may conflict with customers actually trying to enter the site, so we've simplified that, which I think means of having a corner lot in this place, that we didn't have to force an exit maneuver onto Morris Avenue. So we think that was a positive in terms of the overall access design. We are also proposing to remove six parallel spaces along Morris Avenue, so I'm sure the board is aware there are parallel spaces along both sides of the roadway. In terms of facilitating access to our site, we believe that would be better served as simply striped as a shoulder, as all of the parking for this facility is intended to be on the property. There's no direct need for those parallel spaces, and based on our observations, it didn't seem that was, that those spaces were in high demand. We understand that would of course be subject to the county approval as well. Other key design elements, we do have a loading zone on the east side of the proposed building. That is immediately adjacent to the building and is proposed at 12 feet wide, and that is intended to facilitate the larger delivery vehicles that would come to the site, as I'll get to in a few moments here. We are proposing access aisles and general circulation elements that I think are part and parcel to what Wawa's identity is in the current marketplace. They view themselves as a convenient location, they view themselves as a safe location to get in and on and off, and of course, efficiency is key in these types of retail offerings. So what you have is you have in excess of 30 feet drive aisles in and around the fuel pump area. You also have adequate spacing between the different fuel pump islands that would essentially allow three lanes, one lane at each fuel pump islands, and if there's a need to get to a fuel pump or someone or exit around, you have essentially that middle lane, which reduces congestion on the site. The other drive aisles, two-way drive aisles are 25 and 30 feet, which are above the typical industry norm of 24 feet. The one area on the site that is not intended for two-way circulation is the area immediately adjacent to the loading zone. What we've done is we have provided one-way circulation in a northern direction, so or as viewed from the page here in a counterclockwise fashion. Reason being there, wanted to ensure that we had room for buffering between the proposed Wawa development and the adjacent property, and the two-way wasn't deemed to be necessary to the site for the overall operation in that particular area. There are new sidewalks proposed around the entire frontage, although if those exist, the proposal is to remove that, reconstruct all new sidewalk, ensure ADA compliance, have proper ADA ramps at each of the driveways at the intersection. There's an ADA compliant pedestrian route from each of the adjacent proper frontages, knowing and wanting this to be a pedestrian-friendly facility. Obviously, people take the shortest route, typically went on foot, and as such, we've provided a route from each roadway. Terms of the grading of the topography sites, relatively a flat site from an engineering perspective, and it would be proposed to remain that way. In terms of drainage on the site, we are collecting all of the runoff on the property. We are providing water quality units and oil-water separation for all of our runoff. We do have a proposed underground stormwater detention system predominantly in the southwest corner. It's underneath the parking lot that would propose to detain stormwater flows and meet the township, county, DOT, and DEP, even though they won't review it. It'll comply with all of the various stormwater regulations that exist in the state of New Jersey for stormwater runoff reduction as well as water quality elements. There is a comment, I think, to pursue additional management practices on the site, which we're happy to continue to work with your engineer in that fashion. We've talked a little bit about potentially some additional structural measures, whether it be bio swales. We can look at more preventative source control measures with the board professionals and the tenant Wawa, and we're happy to do that and incorporate into the plan as appropriate. Utility connections are all proposed to be new, so we're not going to reuse any of the water lines or sewer lines or anything of the like. Lighting is proposed to be downlit LED-style lighting. There are a series of light poles on the site throughout the perimeter, which we would agree to shield all the perimeter lights, so they're essentially directing onto the property. I think that was one of the comments, one of the board review letters. Those are all mounted at 17 and 1/2 feet. The lights under the canopy are canopy-style lighting. One thing that's unique to Wawa, it's part of their branding and just visual environment, is they have a sloped roof on the canopy, which I'll put up an image here in a second, but the lights essentially follow the slope of that roof. But what I would say is they don't, none of them are angled, they're all parallel to the ground surface. So although the roof is sloped, the lights are parallel to the surface, so there's no real angle or outward fashion of those lights under the canopy. There's also additional wall lights, wall-mounted lights around the perimeter of the building. They're all mounted at 15 feet, and some soffit lighting at the entranceway, which are about nine feet. The general intent is to light the property safely. We do have a lighting plan that takes specific care to put a tighter light grid and just show the light levels at the proposed driveways. Obviously, the entrance and exit points being an area of concern for Wawa, that they want to make sure it's safe in terms of lighting to get on and off the property. In terms of landscaping on the property, you'll see from the graphic, these large green circles, there's street trees on all the property frontages. We do have a variety of shrubs and lower-level plantings predominantly at what we think are the visual points, the entrances to and from the site. We are asking for, I think it's a variance or a waiver, but in terms of the overall parking lot landscaping, it's difficult in this particular case to really meet the 5% parking lot landscaping because there's so much asphalt associated with the fuel pump circulation areas, the ability to get trucks on and off this site. So we are asking for relief in that regard, with the idea that we're focusing landscaping around the perimeter of the site and the overall impervious coverage on the property is compliant. What I would like to introduce is an exhibit that we prepared, trying to look at ourselves in the mirror and sharpen our pencil relative to buffering our neighbor. We understand that we are immediately adjacent to a single-family residential house on the east side. What you see on the current site plan and the landscape plan is a 10-foot wide buffer with a row of evergreen trees mounted at 60 feet. If it would please the board, I'd like to mark Exhibit A3 as what is entitled, "The Landscape Buffer Exhibit Sheet 101," and it's dated 10/27, I'm sorry, dated 11/01/2017.
Jeff, just take a break for a second and I'll ask your question. This plan was prepared in conjunction with reports that we had received from the township professionals, correct?
Correct.
So just in that regard, let me just take a minute and note for the record that we have been in receipt of engineering report dated October 25, 2017, together with fire department report dated today, the police report dated today, and we also have a report from the board planner. To the best of your understanding and knowledge, are those the entirety of the professional reports that we have received?
Yes.
And the exhibit that you just put up on the board will address some of the concerns raised, in particular with regard to the eastern buffer, correct?
Right. There's a couple of comments that discuss buffering in particular, and there's a couple of comments that talk about various dimensions on the plan, I think with the intent of looking to increase the buffer to the east if possible. So what we've done in an effort to be proactive is we've prepared this exhibit based on a preparation meeting that the project team had, and looking at the dimensions on the plan as well as the proposed plantings, and we came up with the following, which I'd like, which I'd mark, like to summarize. The left side of the sheet is the current buffer design. As I stated, single row of evergreen trees, six to eight feet in height. It has some end treatment with some shorter shrubs on the north and south to provide some transition visually. The right side is what we're calling the revised buffer design. We've done two things that I think are critical. One, we've increased the width from 10 to 15 feet. We've done that via reducing the sidewalk on the west side of the building from nine feet to six feet, and the drive aisle on the far east side from 15 feet to 13 feet. So we've looked at our templates, we've looked at our circulation elements, and we've determined that we can come up with that five feet without sacrificing any of the operational or convenience design elements of the proposed Wawa and add five feet to the buffer. We then looked at the planting design, trying to think of ourselves from our neighbor's perspective, and we've varied the plants in terms of the height, species, and we've increased, doubled, almost doubled, the number of plants in an effort to densify that area and provide some more visual interest. And we are proposing, which is mentioned in the board engineer's letter, a proposed solid fence to be planted, to be located on the west side or the side closest to the Wawa building, and put all of the plantings on the east side or our neighbor's side. So we would put that fence about two feet off the curb line on the east side of the proposed Wawa, gives us about a 13-foot planting area, adequate to plant the design that we have, staggered in orientation, it's varied in species, and adequate to provide maintenance to that area. In summary, existing design, excuse me, current design, revised design. Current design has four different species, revised design has nine. Total plantings on the existing, 60. Total on the proposed, 114. Total evergreen trees in the existing, 24. Total proposed, 49. Total number of deciduous shrubs, and here's where we look to vary the height to provide some more visual interest, goes from 0 to 39. Evergreen shrubs go from 0 to 14, and we have basically some of the ground treatments and things more or less remain the same. Approximately twice the number of plantings, but potentially more effective is the varied height and the varied species to give it a more naturalistic look instead of a stagnant row of evergreen plantings. So we want to-
Just let me confirm one thing, Jeff, for the record, that the increase to the buffer together with the increase in landscaping, did that in any way impact the driveway off of Morris?
No.
So that your prior testimony remains the same concerning the means of ingress from Morris, correct?
Correct. There's no impact to what I consider the zoning table or the zoning analysis. There's no variances introduced, no design waivers or anything of the like. So from a zoning standpoint, I would say it's equal or better, and obviously from a landscape and visual and buffering intent, I would say it's a superior design. In terms of the proposed tenant here, and the intended tenant is of course a proposed Wawa convenience store, as I'm sure the board is readily aware of the retail offering includes both the convenience store as well as the fuel sales. In terms of the operations of the proposed Wawa, it is intended to be a 24-hour-a-day facility. There are typically 40 to 50 employees on any given site of this size. 10 to 12 is usually the max shift, and that's typically in the AM. The types of deliveries to the site do vary. Dairy is one thing that Wawa produces as part of their corporate offering, so they produce that themselves, and they typically deliver three times per week. Fresh groceries are delivered in a tractor-trailer, and those are approximately four to five times per week. And that tractor- And that tractor-trailer is what we call a WB-50 truck. So that is a moderately sized tractor-trailer truck, so four to five times per week, you know, on any given day. Typically, one would be the average number of trucks that would arrive to the site for the fresh groceries. Baked goods are delivered daily, hopefully as a consumer we all expect. Other vendors do vary a little bit. Some of the more sophisticated corporate brands out there, Coke, you know, some of the potato chips, things like that, they deliver themselves. They don't use a distribution facility. Those typically come in smaller box trucks. Some of the vendors even have smaller vehicles than that. A lot can even fit in a parking space, but those come a little bit more sporadically, but typically during normal business hours. Fuel deliveries also have that same WB-50 tractor-trailer designation. Those come on an as-needed basis, as I'm sure the board can understand. But that WB-50 is what we anticipate to be the largest design vehicle. So the site is designed where the delivery truck, both the fuel and the retail, never conflicts with a parking space or a vehicle getting fuel. So in theory, the site could be, or is fully operational even when the delivery trucks are on the property. With that said, the intention is to deliver on off-peak times. We can certainly understand the AM and the PM peak. There's also typically a soft lunch peak because of the food offering at a proposed Wawa. So the idea is that the deliveries are scheduled, shoot the gaps between those hours that we would consider peak in terms of the Wawa operation, which with this particular facility typically coincides with the peak on the road as well. So it's somewhat convenient in that nature. In terms of the proposed building, I did mention briefly, and I'll just state a few facts as we just consider the Wawa. These plans were actually submitted, so I don't know if I necessarily have to mark them unless the board wishes that I do so. These are identical to what was submitted. These are the proposed building elevations that were prepared by Richard W. Luke Architect. What I did just want to point out is the two entrance elevations. So in the top right, what's labeled as the front, that's facing the north or towards the fuel pumps. That has the main entrance tower to provide some variability in terms of the vertical elements of the facility. There is some storefront in glass, there's a stone knee wall. It's carried a little bit on the entrance tower, an awning to provide again some visual interest as well as some protection in terms of rain and things towards the front sidewalk. And then the entrance tower, which has the standing seam metal component to it. The second elevation that I'll point to here is what's called the rear elevation. This is facing Morris Avenue. This is a little bit more muted in that it doesn't have the entrance tower. It does have some of the features at the entranceway. Obviously, the building treatments are consistent throughout all four sides of the building, but this elevation is a little bit more muted to scale towards Morris Avenue without that entrance tower. But I would also like to point out-
Before you take that down, just the, I know the elevations are shown and the board members have them as part of the package, but I just want to confirm for the record that the zone allows four stories and forty feet in height. And the proposed building for the Wawa is a single-story. The top of the parapet is twenty-two and a half feet, is that correct?
Correct.
And the top of the architectural towers is thirty-three?
Thirty-three, correct.
So both of those fall well under the permitted height of forty, correct?
Correct.
So when you talk about, I'm going to ask you to do the same thing with regards to the height when you speak about the canopy. And I'm going to ask you, just from an engineering, recognizing that you're not giving architectural testimony in terms of architectural compatibility, but from an engineering site plan preparation, whether the height and layout of the canopy is consistent from the height design with the building?
Great. Will do.
And I don't know, I just wanted to get Mr. Fisher's input on whether you wanted to mark this, since it's a board, it's a separate exhibit.
You don't have to, but maybe for clarification is worth it, yeah?
Yeah, okay, so we can mark that. The first sheet of the elevation is A4, and they are in the package as Sheet 22 of Make 3 as well. And the plan that Mr. Martell is putting up now is the gas canopy, which is Sheet 23. And if we could have that marked as A5.
It is marked as A5, and this is the gas canopy stacked with three kiosks. It also shows the trash compound, and again, prepared by Richard W. Luke Architect and as part of the site plan package. So this is the proposed canopy in the top left. What you see here is the same stone treatment on the columns. And then in terms of the roof, which I mentioned as being a slanted roof, it has the same metal seam material that was on the tower and the awning feature of the building. So the idea is it's a complementary structure. Really, the only branding elements in terms of what we are calling signage are bands that exist below the roof height of the overall canopy. So those are more scaled, just a little bit above the pump height. And those are really just at the two flanks, so they're at the eastern and the western side of the pumps on those outer islands to give the identification of, of course, the Wawa brand for that product offering as well. The height on the low side, its under clearance is listed as fourteen feet, ten and a half inches. The higher part of the canopy is listed as twenty-five feet, two inches. So it's in between that parapet we listed at twenty-two and a half feet and the tower at thirty-three and a half feet. So this is kind of right in that midpoint between those two heights. The truss itself is at fourteen feet. Of course, the under clearance holding that fourteen feet is being a safety and just an operational component that if a vehicle finds its way under the canopy or under the truss, delivery vehicle, or somebody that maybe, you know, just happens to drive under there for some reason, a truck, obviously, we wouldn't want to have that physical conflict with the structural element. So fourteen feet is kind of that golden standard relative to the under clearance for a fuel pump, or fuel sales for a canopy. Similarly, the trash, we'll mention, like materials. So this is a typical split-face block, which it feels like ninety percent of the trash enclosures are these days. This is an enclosure that's almost a miniature version of the building. It's got the same stone, it's got the same ephes, and it's meant to have like materials in an effort to complement and almost mute itself overall as a structure on the building as compared to introducing different materials.
Jeff, let me just, on that note, the trash enclosure needs a variance because the code only allows for a six-foot-high enclosure, and we're proposing something higher, is that correct?
Correct. We're proposing, I think, eight feet three. Double-check that.
Eight feet eight.
Eight feet eight, okay. So we're proposing eight feet eight. The trash enclosure, I should have mentioned in the site plan review, is at the southwest corner of the site. This houses recyclables, houses a typical dumpster, and it also houses a compactor for the cardboard. That compactor is a little bit higher than a typical dumpster. As such, we are proposing the height of eight feet eight in order to provide its intent of screening all of those internal elements. So looked at this site, I'll say real quick from a location standpoint, and although it's in a front yard area, we did think that this was visually and functionally the best location on the property. And I'll just say a couple of quick things. We didn't want to locate it next to adjacent single-family. We thought visually there was, you know, three frontages, but we thought this was a location that we could screen well with plantings. It's also located behind a proposed monument sign, which we are proposing, and that monument sign is a low-style monument sign with a stone base. And in some ways, it provides almost a screening element to it as well. In addition to that, of course, we have the dense plantings around it. So we are asking for variance in that height. But we do think on this particular site, having three front yards and one single-family house immediately adjacent to us, that we've located it properly, and I think the height, given its internal components, would be a benefit visually as well to make sure all those components are screened. Lastly, going to, not lastly, but wrapping up in terms of the site before we get into some of the review letters, I mentioned the proposed traffic signal. What I'd like to do, I think, is just introduce a quick exhibit just so the board understands some relationship between the signal and the-
Features.
A6.
The A6 is a, also another regional aerial exhibit prepared by Stonefield Engineering dated 10/31/2017. The differences that we've overlaid to propose Wawa purpose on the existing condition. As I stated in my opening, one of the things that we're most proud to present to the board, and we think that is really a function of some of the time and effort that we've spent leading up to this day, is that we have an application pending with the DOT.
Can you use that?
Okay, I think I'm back. Maybe I hit it by accident. So one of the things that we're most proud of in terms of our presentation this evening is that we've spent a lot of time and effort master planning and considering various design options for safe ingress and egress of this property, and obviously, understanding how we fit in with the adjacent roadways. You're going to hear detailed traffic testimony, so I won't get into the specifics. But I mentioned a proposed signalized intersection of Cleveland Place and Morris Turnpike. We have an application in with DOT. That application is deemed complete. We have met with them on two separate occasions and discussed the design of this in advance of submitting an application. And we believe we will be successful in getting approval to construct that proposed signal. Along with that signal and some of the operational components and how the traffic is analyzed and how the movements are analyzed, we are proposing to widen Cleveland Place. Right now, Cleveland Place is a two-lane roadway, one lane in each direction, north-south connects Morris Avenue with Morris Turnpike. And we're proposing to add a third lane proximate to the proposed signalized intersection. That way, there'll be two lanes heading in a northern direction. So we are proposing a dedication of about eighteen hundred square feet of the property to essentially be dedicated to the township, to be included within the proposed Cleveland Place right-of-way to facilitate that proposed road widening. All of the traffic signal, the road widening, that is all part of an application by the applicant. And as such, it is the expense and the responsibility of the applicant. So this is something that we believe is a positive improvement overall. And the last thing I would say, just from a general standpoint, is that we looked at this with and without a Wawa, and the belief is that that proposed traffic signal is a benefit. It's something that specifically a traffic safety officer, I think I did three, four years ago, and had a conversation with the DOT about. Wasn't a mechanism to effectuate any type of action at that time when we were able to meet and discuss that. I think we were pretty well-received by all the jurisdictional agencies. In addition to the DOT application, we do have a pending application with the county that have reviewed and issued comments, all of which we comply with. Specifically, the left turn ingress driveways under their jurisdiction. They are looking at various elements, including sightlines and certain construction elements, all of which we would comply with. And the last agency with jurisdiction is the Soil Conservation District, which of course, we would pursue plan certification as part of this proposal. With that said, I was intending to maybe go through Mr. Disco's review letters as part of my presentation here, unless we want to break for questions or-
Well, you supplied a response to Mr. Disco, correct?
I did. Just before this evening, I essentially marked up Mr. Disco's letter with the idea of describing to him what we can plan, plan to comply with and what we plan to speak to. So that wasn't something that was formally submitted to the board, but just for ease of the presentation, yes.
And it's my understanding that there's nothing of a problematic nature contained in either of the reports. Is that correct?
No. Any request or, you know, technical comment, I believe we've complied with, are some items that there's discussion or testimony or things to consider that we can certainly speak to. But all of the engineering technical comments can be complied with.
The one thing that I do want, you made reference to the two spanner signs. The code allows us to have three wall signs because there's one wall sign allowed for each street frontage. So because of our three frontages, technically, we're allowed three wall signs. Is it true that we've operated in a conservative fashion and we are proposing two wall signs, one on the northern facade and one on the southern facade, but that we have considered the spanner signs, which are the two signs at the far pumps on the site that you pointed to before? Right, those signs. We've considered those wall signs as well.
Correct.
And to that end, if the board considers them wall signs that we're asking for variance relief, since those two signs together with the two actual wall signs, that would make us have four signs instead of three signs as permitted?
Correct.
But that the area of the wall signs, the actual wall signs on the front and rear facades are compliant, is that correct?
Correct.
We're not asking for any variance for, to exceed the permitted height, I mean permitted size.
Not for wall signs, no.
Okay. With regard to the other signage on the site, we are asking for variance relief with regard to the freestanding signage, one that is proposed on Morris Turnpike and one that is proposed, as you described, in the area of Repuse Enclosure on Morris Avenue, correct?
Correct.
The freestanding on Morris Turnpike is an actual freestanding sign, correct?
Correct.
It's on a base, it's detailed in the plan sheet. It has clearance from the architectural base to the bottom of the pricing sign. It has required pricing as-
Excuse me, I'm sorry, one second.
Can you hear me with the-
Yeah, you might want to bring that mic in, just because these are televised, and some of the complaints we do get from the public-
That you can't hear? Okay.
Also, if you could just point where the signs are.
Sure. And if anybody's following along, on Sheet 20 of 23, the details are shown. There is one sign on Morris Turnpike. It's orientated with the face perpendicular to the roadway, so obviously viewed from the roadway on Morris Turnpike. There's a monument sign proposed on Morris Avenue. It's in the southwest corner. It's essentially really only visible from the one-way on Morris Avenue. We also propose one wall sign over each of the entrances on the proposed buildings. So there's one on the north, one on the south. The south is, I believe, a little bit smaller than the north. And then in terms of the fuel, there is these banner signs that are tucked under the trusses on the outer two lanes of the canopy. So one faces east, one faces west. So four wall signs, two freestanding signs, one of the freestanding signs being a monument-style sign.
So let me just reconfirm a couple of things. One is that there's no actual signage on the canopy, correct?
Correct. The structure itself, Wawa doesn't use the typical metal fascia with the sign and the illumination. They have a more architectural-style roof. So there's no actual signage on the actual roof structure of the canopy.
Okay. And on the freestanding sign, just point to it again on-
Morris Turnpike?
Yes, I was just looking for which exhibit that was.
A6.
A6. The code provides that you can have twenty-four square feet in sign area. And I'd like you to just take a minute for the record and address the actual area of the sign that the Wawa advertisement language is contained on the sign. The sign has a couple of components that I understand. It has the architectural base, and then it's on posts. It has the required by state regulation pricing. And then it has the Wawa corporate name on the top, correct?
Right. So with this particular retail offering, obviously, the convenience store and the fuel sales, what we have is we have a, again, looking at the sign, the detail in twenty- and the fuel sales, what we have is we have a, again, looking at the detail in 20 of 23, there's a top cabinet, which is 24 square feet, and that is essentially the Wawa logo. And then there is what's called a bottom cabinet, which is approximately 35.75 square feet, and that is the fuel price portion of that sign.
Okay. So just staying with the top portion of the area that actually says Wawa, that has been kept to 24 square feet, correct?
Correct.
And that's what the code allows, correct?
Correct.
So that despite the fact that it's a freestanding sign and contains the required pricing as regulated by the state of New Jersey, we've done what we can to contain it at 24 square feet.
Yeah, what I would say, the advertising element is that Wawa portion, and that's below the allowable.
Okay. And then with regard to the monument sign, that sign has also been depicted on sheet 20 of 23, correct?
Correct.
And that's in...
Can you point that out first?
Yeah, the monument sign is in the southwest corner, the bottom-left of the site.
And that's directly in front of that refuse area, correct?
Correct. So again, it's meant for one-way traffic on Morris Avenue. So as you, if you're coming along Morris Avenue and approaching the site on your left or on the north, it's meant to be viewed as you're approaching the site.
And the sign as detailed on sheet 20 of 23 depicts the same stone base that is on the other sign and that is contained on the buildings.
Correct.
And other than the required state pricing as regulated by the state of New Jersey, the only other verbiage on the sign is the Wawa with the corporate logo, correct?
Correct.
There's no other advertising on the sign?
No.
But we're requiring...
There's a sign at the bottom that says, "No surcharge ATM PNC Bank." It's kind of a placard.
And the ATM pricing is also something that's regulated by banking regulations, correct, on ATMs? To the best of your knowledge as an engineer?
I'm not that well-versed in that particular topic.
Have, we require a variance, though, for this sign as well.
Correct.
So in summary, we're asking the board to consider the sign package that consists of the two wall signs that are conforming in size on the front and the rear, correct? There's two spanner signs over the pump islands, and then the freestanding sign on Morris Turnpike and the corresponding monument sign on Morris Avenue.
Correct.
And then we also have directional signs at the entrances.
Right, enter and exit signs at all the entrances.
And those require variances because they contain the word Wawa, and they would technically be considered advertising, correct?
Correct.
So on the list of variances that we have, there are a handful that relate to the sign package.
Correct.
The other variances that you testified to, you've mentioned the 5% interior green with parking lot, and just touch base with the one, the code has a provision that all street trees have to be more than two feet outside of the right-of-way, and it's my understanding that there's one portion of the site plan which does not comply with that.
Right. There's four trees that are slightly closer than the two feet, and those are the four trees along Cleveland Place, the southern foremost trees. So we have a planting island there of four feet and change, I think, and we've more or less looked to shoot the gap between the curb and the sidewalk there, and it's a little bit closer than the two feet that the code asks for.
And you've talked about the height of the accessory structure, which is the canopy. The accessory structure is a variance in and of itself, correct? Because in non-residential zones, accessory structures are not permitted. So your plans to pick that as a variance, and we'll hear more from the planner, correct?
Yes.
And the last variance addresses the sidewalk size. The code has a provision for a maximum width of six feet, and our sidewalk in front of the Wawa building is in excess of six feet, correct?
Correct. We have up to 10 feet.
And you testified during your qualifications that you have experience with other Wawa applications. Is that correct?
Correct.
So in your experience, have you found it that Wawa seeks to have that larger sidewalk in the front for any particular purpose? Is there a public safety purpose that drives that, that you've been requested to design when you look at site plans?
Yeah, it's kind of a public safety, convenience slash customer experience kind of wrapped into one. So as everybody can understand, there are times in the morning, you know, everybody's getting their coffee, and there's, you know, people coming in and out of the site, passing by each other, et cetera. The excess width is something they found facilitates just the pedestrian movements of people getting on and off the property. It's similar to designing a road or something like that, where just that free-flow movement is something that they've found to just help the operation of the site in whole. There's also some column elements that are at the front door, and there's a bump-out at the rear entrance area. So in some areas, it's not a full 10 feet, you know, at the entrance area. Between the architectural elements, look to pinch into that 10 feet, but visually, it's easier to just have the 10-foot static across and let the architectural elements pinch some of those areas. But in terms of the overall pedestrian design, just to reiterate, it's something that's very important to Wawa. They don't have a curb. They avoid the trip-and-fall element. They use bollards to essentially protect that area, which is far superior than curb. So they've removed the trip-and-fall aspect of it, or the stumbling of the curb. They've provided the bollards for public safety, and they provide the width, probably more so for just a convenience and customer experience.
We're gonna take a minute here, because, you know, there's a lot of information that you just went over. I know the board does have questions.
Sure.
They're ready for them. But I would like to go and touch a little bit on Mr. Disco's report. Before we get into questions, I would like to go over the report, and then after the report's done, take a minute, get some questions out that we might have now, and then continue if that's okay.
Yeah, I'd like to just ask a question. Ms. Price, what you just went through is an identification of the variances required, or were you providing testimony in support of these variances?
No, a list of the variances and asking Mr. Martel to confirm them.
Okay. So there's a lot of other variances that are highlighted in reports of our professionals. So I think, as the chairman suggested, maybe it's better to just go through the report and deal with each one item by item.
And then we'll see where we are. And then we'll allow some questions here, and then we'll allow you to continue with those.
And there are some that are identified in Mr. Michael's report.
Right.
That are not identified in Disco's and vice versa.
Right.
Okay. All right. Let's go over Mr. Disco's report, if we may. Mr. Disco, you can take us through the report, please.
Sure. Would you like me to touch on each number or just really kind of the ones that I think are more pertinent?
So I'll leave it up to the board. I mean, the ones, the ones that you think are...
Okay. I mean...
Your biggest concerns at this point.
Yeah.
I think I'll touch on anything that I think Mr. Martel hasn't addressed.
Right, that's what I was gonna say. So I'm gonna touch...
And comment number two, there was a review comment that says it was no product displays under the canopy. And I think in what you gave me, you're gonna confirm that, that there are no product displays or outdoors.
Correct. Confirmed.
And along with that, on the wide sidewalks areas, there's no anticipation of product displays or tables to be placed.
No. The only item that would be are trash and recyclable cans. No tables, no advertising, no sale elements.
Okay. I think we would then go to the next page.
Before we do that, Mr. Disco, number five.
Sure.
You say that a variance is required for the proposed front yard setback exceeding the 21-foot average. That confused me. What is the proposed front yard setback?
The applicant on their plans has asked for a variance there. I'm noting in that comment number five that the canopy location is actually beyond the setback there, the 21 feet. In the GC zone, it's a little reverse to what you're used to. It's an average of the prevailing adjacent property setbacks. And they don't, the ordinance doesn't want you to be further than that. Exactly. They don't want you setback. So there's a variance with that in that we're exceeding...
Oh, I see.
The average setbacks of it. So it's a little counterintuitive to what we're used to. So I hope that clears up the...
It's 21 versus, they want 37 and a half.
Correct.
So normally, you're too close to the street. Here, they're too far back from the street.
And that's not necessarily a bad thing.
Right.
Right.
Agreed. I just didn't understand it. And then in that same number five, what about the rear yard setback? Because the proposed 37.5 rear yard setback does not conform to the 50-foot setback requirement.
Right.
So that does require...
That requires a variance, yeah.
All right. So there'll need to be some testimony or... Okay. Thank you.
And that's only because it's a residential use, not a residential zone. It's a residential use there. I think they, you know, they touched on a little bit on number seven, which is the height of the canopy, and I think what I heard was that the planner's gonna further discuss that.
And just on that, so the...
That's number eight, actually.
Right. The proposed height of the canopy is 25.3 inches. 15 feet is the limit for an accessory, is this an accessory structure?
Yes.
So when an accessory structure exceeds, is, I mean, this is not a, this doesn't put us into a use variance because the height is more than, this is, because it's an accessory structure, not a principal use.
It's an, the planning board can exercise ancillary jurisdiction when it has a site plan or subdivision in front of it, if it's for a height variance for an accessory structure over 10%.
Okay.
And also, just be aware that an accessory structure is not permitted in the non-residential zone anyway. So they need a variance for the structure itself.
Okay. So how are you going to address each of these variances? Are you gonna just provide testimony?
I asked Mr. Martel about those. I asked him specifically about the height on the accessory structure, which ranges on one side from 14 feet to a maximum of 25, and the compatibility of the height of the parapet of the building of 22.6 and the top of the tower at 30. That's where those questions were in terms of the compatibility. And, I mean, we're kind of stuck with the code provision that says no accessory structures in a non-residential zone. And given the fact that we have the three front yards and one rear, our planner will touch upon the uniqueness of that and the three front yard design, but that's why I had Mr. Martel take us through the road frontages.
All right. So I'm just trying to get organized here procedurally about how you're gonna take us through each of these variables.
You're gonna hear detailed testimony from our professional planner. My intent is just to give you some factual background, and you'll hear the legalities and the justifications by a separate witness.
All right. Great. Thanks for indulging.
Okay. Let's finish that report. Then, Mr. Disco, if any...
I think Mr. Martel addressed number nine in terms of the trash location with the site triangle. Number 10 essentially is only 34 parking spaces are required. They're providing 50. It's noted, and he noted it as well, that you were gonna lose six along Morris Avenue. So 34 plus six is a, you know, a net of 40. I think it's fair to ask for the testimony why they're gonna provide more on that. The loading zone, he addressed, number 11. It is 106 feet long. I would probably ask what the, you mentioned the, I think it was a WB50. What are the lengths of those trucks?
It's about 55 feet, 53 to 55 feet.
Tied in with that is probably, the board would want to know, a time restriction on some of the deliveries. I think you heard the frequency.
Right. That was a question I was gonna ask. What time were some of these deliveries? Is there a certain time, a particular, you know, evening, mornings?
Because it's along the residential.
Yeah.
You hear that beep, beep, beep. It's probably not a good thing, you know, with the deliveries backing up.
And there are deliveries of baked goods, we realize, daily. So you would think they would want to be very early, and your dairy could potentially be too.
Yeah, so I think we...
I don't think that there'll be any need for backup beepers because there's the, you can pull up right alongside the...
You're still gonna hear trucks going in and out, right?
True. We, as any other commercial use abutting a residential use, are forced to comply with the New Jersey Noise Control Act, and that's the governing statute, which then goes hand-in-hand with your local noise control ordinance. So we have to comply with 50 dB A between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM and 65 dB A otherwise, or else there's a violation. So we would have that obligation for compliance, together with whatever conditions that the board were to exercise in conjunction with the site plan.
And is there a certain area that the deliveries would go to? Is it gonna be different locations? Is it gonna be...
Well, the store is on the loading zone on the east side.
That's the loading zone.
Right.
That's what I was...
The fuel is out over the underground storage tanks out by Morris Turnpike.
I don't think the fuel is an issue. It's the residential part. I know when we had 7-Eleven, which is a little bit down, a couple of years back, due some changes, we did put some restrictions on deliveries with them as well.
Yeah, I think we understand, obviously, the intent of that. Obviously, we've looked at the buffer and added the fence in an effort to mitigate that to the extent. The reality is a majority are, there's a couple that are the AM, the baked goods, and things of that nature, but the large majority are during normal business hours.
So would there be deliveries at 2:00 in the morning, or, you know, could there be at that late? You know, that's all.
The board could, you know, put a condition.
We get that with 7-Eleven.
All right. So maybe we'll hear that.
I think you want to limit...
Yeah, really, because you're 24.
Early AM and the late PM, because you have residential uses.
Yeah, I think we understand the intent, as long as we're clearly distinguish the fuel and the store. I think that's something that sounds reasonable.
The fuel would be as bad. The store is, I'm more concerned because of the 24-hour operation.
Right. And within that, the state noise regulations, I mean, there's a lot of leeway in that, whether it's pulsing sound, systems.
Yeah.
You're not gonna have the health officer there stationed to issue a violation.
Yeah, especially the one in the line.
Okay. 12, I believe, at least what I got, they're gonna comply with the hairpin striping requirement paving specifications.
Correct.
13 was addressed, I think fairly well, by Mr. Martel. 14, that was really the first thrust of the testimony. I would ask, what is the size of the fencing you're proposing?
We would defer to the board. I mean, we would probably default to six feet, and if the board felt that they wanted eight feet, we would be okay with that as well.
The ordinance requires six-foot of closely wood, so you're envisioning a stockade-type of fence.
I think that eight would be more appropriate, but maybe they talk to the three neighboring owners and see if they would. Eight would be more appropriate. I would think eight, you know, six feet, you can see people. You want to try to not see people in your backyard when you're having...
Yeah, eight feet is agreeable, and I think, again, just to reiterate, we're putting the plantings on the residential side, so it's gonna be a backdrop to the residential. But I understand the point. Eight feet is okay with the applicant.
I have one on that fencing. Is it going to extend into the front yard? I didn't really understand the extent of the length of that fence.
We propose it right now really to stop at the face of the adjacent structure. So we thought visually that would make sense, but again, we're flexible to that regard along Morris Avenue. Along Morris Turnpike, it falls well short. We're ending it between the canopy and the store. But we would defer to the board and their judgment as to where to stop that. It feels like the front face of the house is...
Okay. Just two comments. One is that if it's in the front yard, and that requires a variance, it may be justified because we're looking to buffer the adjacent residence. So technically, you may need a variance for that. And the other, oh, I think that was the only point on that. Oh, I have another question in regards to the landscaping that's proposed on the residential side of that. Is there going to be any irrigation... proposed on the residential side of that. Is there going to be any irrigation proposed to
Yes. So the entire site would be, all the planting areas would be irrigated, including that area. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Just on the fence height, the eight feet is not a problem, but we also need a variance for that. So
That's correct. I'm assuming the board wants that.
Okay.
Does the fence serve at all to reduce noise if it has no gaps in it?
It would be board on board, so it would not be open.
Right.
Yes, it would have a mitigating component to it, yes.
And, and the height of the, the species there, are they still six to eight foot high?
So we've, we've varied them now in terms of the higher plantings, yes. But we've also now provided some, some lower level plantings as well. And also some deciduous, which, you know, are typical, planted at typical caliber, and, you know, things will grow at different heights.
Okay. So I think, I think that addresses comment number fifteen. Sixteen is somewhat tied in there in that, again, to the residential use to the east, there are foot candle readings over one foot candle. They're typically modeled without any interference from landscaping and fence. I would, I believe you would concur with that. So any landscaping and fencing you put in the area would mitigate what is on the plan shown as upwards of one foot candle, which is roughly a full moon for those of you who don't know what a one foot is.
We also now are moving them five feet further off the property line, and we agreed to shield them as well. So we'll likely be, you know, in the point two, point three range with the final design.
And, and that would be something you would want for a design. So you minimize the spill rate on that.
And they said they were going to point them away.
Yep. Seventeen, again, I think the total number of signs, I think I'm, I'm looking at thirteen signs there. I would note, I would disagree with the, um, the, the statement that the wall signs were conforming. I list in my thing that they're five point five feet high. Our ordinance includes not only the lettering, but the logo as part of the height of that sign. So it would be a slight variance for the wall signs as well. Now, you could ask the applicant to reduce the logo down to the five feet, or if you feel the six inches does not matter, grant the variance. But there are a lot of signs on the site, including the, um, the, what, I'll say the ground signs, the P fifty sign and monument signs, you know, in terms of size, and also the height of the one near Morris Turnpike.
Mr. Disco, can I ask you a question on?
Sure.
You know, I drove up Morris earlier, or Morris Turnpike. I didn't know, I didn't see any sign that is just like, there's tall pillars that are going to have twenty feet, not like Route twenty-two that is there.
Right.
What have you seen in other towns that you've done? Because this is going to be just out there. I mean, we, we haven't had anything like that.
As I've mentioned, I think if you come to this site from any direction, you're going to know it's a Wawa.
Yeah, I think there's plenty of signs.
Thirteen says plenty of signs, I, I think.
Is that too high, twenty? I mean, what's, what's our ordinance allow on this thing?
Twelve foot is the limitation.
And they're proposing twenty?
I, I, I confirm the twenty. Or Mr. Martel confirm the twenty?
It's, it's twenty. It's three and a half foot base. And then, and I was going to have our traffic engineer take us through the specifics. Because of the base, the vertical clearance for site distance, because of the location along Morris Turnpike, um, there's, you need a mandatory clearance from a, from a base to the bottom of the sign. So I'll have the, I was going to have our traffic engineer just confirm that for the record, and then we can discuss it again.
Yeah. Okay.
And I think for, for the record also, the height of the driveway identification signs are, if you could put that on the record here.
Put it to back.
And again, those, they not only say enter and exit, but they also have the Wawa logo on them. There's going to be seven of those, yeah. I did go while they're looking that
Seven of, I'm sorry.
Seven directional signs with logos.
Seven directional?
In addition to the two wall, the two ground, and the two spanner signs.
So the directional signs are by the turn, or where they went and out. Where, where are the other on that one?
There's seven, seven of them.
Throughout the site.
Okay.
Well, we also have do not enter signs as well, right?
You have regular traffic signs on the site. Those aren't considered in the
Right. So you have those in addition to
Yeah, a lot of
directional signs with the Wawa logo on them, in addition to the banner and the monitor.
Whoever's going to give more testimony on the signs, it would be very good if we can point out each one, because then we can see what's warranted and what's not warranted, what we feel is not warranted, and then have that discussion. Because I just think, you know, we want to try to keep a level of, you know, I mean, everyone's going to see it's a Wawa, there's no doubt, okay? But it just seems like twenty feet, when you're driving down, this is where you're going to see this huge Wawa sign, where you have nothing in the neighborhood of, of Morris Avenue with those big signs. I look at comparing Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, what we did with Chipotle just a couple of months ago. So I'm trying to keep that uniformity. For that, I'm sure the board would feel that way.
And the, I went to the Maplewood Wawa, which is brand new. In fact, it wasn't even on the two thousand sixteen Google Earth. They have no directional signs with logos on them. Avanel, I went to, and they have one in and one out. So we've got seven. They had two and zero. Excuse me?
I was kidding. I said, do you get coffee and gas?
No.
Sorry.
So, I mean, you know, there's certainly a branding element here, but that may be the genesis of why we have seven of those as opposed to really traffic safety.
No, no, no. It's not, that's not the genesis. The genesis is traffic safety. So I think if the board's concern is over branding, that those traffic signal
I don't know if it's over branding. Right now, it's just too many signs. We're going to, but
But I think, let me just, let me just stress that I think from an operational standpoint, having exit and enter with, without Wawa on the sign is very important from a traffic safety standpoint.
Correct.
And from operating many stores, we have found that necessary. So
Again, I don't know if it's so much that there's a Wawa on the sign, it's just maybe the number of signs. That's all right now. Right, you know, until we hear more testimony on why you may need it. But that's just right now. So, Mr. Disco, if you don't mind, continue.
And the height of those were?
Uh, four feet, one inch.
Yeah.
Maybe we have too many entrances.
So those directional signs are four feet high. Okay. Uh, I think eighteen was addressed, nineteen was addressed, twenty, they've indicated to me they will comply. Twenty-one, they, they provided a gallons per day sanitary flow. I would presume, Mr. Martel, if you could comment, that that would be less than the aggregate amount of the seven other lots? Would you have a, a knowledge of that?
It's a little bit more, but it's, I think it's within about fifteen percent. So it's, it's a modest increase.
Okay. Uh, the stormwater, I had a conversation with, with one of Mr. Martel's colleagues earlier, and they would comply with everything I asked for on that. So
Okay. So that, that's an important part.
Yep.
Because it's an important part. Um, I did see the report from the stormwater, and you feel comfortable with everything there. That's what I just want to make
Yeah. In summary, they're reducing peak, peak runoff rates. They're providing storage on site. The lot coverage is within, not, doesn't require a variance. The, the stormwater management rules require certain activities, and that's, I've asked them to expand upon the non-structural, um, activities that they, that they've evaluated for the project. And they've indicated they will do that. One of the details in terms of the cartridge filters wasn't complete, that would be done. So again, I, I concluded I take no exception to where they're going with that. It is reducing rates. It is what appears to be in conformance to the stormwater management rules of N J D B.
And what about twenty-three? You're, you're, you made the comment there.
Right. So where they're dedicating the right turn, or it's actually a left turn and a right turn lane on the third lane that they're providing along Cleveland Place, there's an existing drainage structure there that would, was previously in the curb line. And now as they expand that, that's going to be sitting where that was.
Alright.
Again, my experience, and I see this on Route twenty-two and in other locations, when you take something, especially a double catch basin basin, that is formerly in the curb line and is not getting
And now in the middle of the street.
Now you put it in the street, those things tend to require repair. I see them in mountainside. I've seen them on Route twenty-two every year or two. So if we can shift that back to the curb line, I'm just trying to avoid a future maintenance headache.
That wouldn't be a problem, I guess.
Correct. We, we will
Okay.
revise the plan as such.
Just for the record, you would comply with items number twenty-two through twenty-eight?
Correct.
On the engineer's report to the satisfaction of Mr. Disco?
Correct.
Yes.
And in terms of twenty-eight, the applicant has indicated to me they're not relying on infiltration for their conformance. So the storm, the soil boring question that I had is not necessary.
Okay.
Uh, twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one are really traffic. And I know if you want to wait for the testimony
Yeah, that, that can be, that's a whole separate, yeah, that'd be fine. We'll hear from, I know they did a D O T report and everything, so that's fine. Any, let, let's take a second here. Again, a lot of information for the board. Any, but, does anybody else have questions at this juncture right here? I'll start with this side down here.
Uh, I have some questions in regard to traffic and ingress and egress, but I think I'll hold off on that. But I do have a quick question in regard to the structure itself. Ingress and egress outside the building. So are there entrance exits on the backside of the building facing Morris Avenue?
Yes, there's one customer entrance facing Morris Avenue. So there's a field of parking that that would essentially service. And there's one customer entrance facing north towards the, the fuel sales.
Okay. So when you're, you're going eastbound, obviously down Morris Avenue, it's a one-way street that's three lanes of traffic, I believe, right? That's two or three lanes, right?
Three.
It's three lanes, correct? Okay. So if you're coming eastbound down Morris Avenue, you have the, the monument sign you'll see first on your left-hand side. That gives you the opportunity to make a left-hand turn before that monument sign.
Onto Cleveland.
Right, onto Cleveland. If the particular driver wants to catch that and can't, and they're in the far right-hand lane, they're going to be continuing further eastbound, kind of adjacent to where that loading dock is, right? Is that an ingress and egress there, or is that a do not enter?
This isn't, so the, the driveway on Morris Avenue is an ingress only, so you can enter there. You can enter the driveway on Morris Avenue as you
You can enter. You can enter over here.
Correct. Enter, you cannot exit.
Right. You cannot exit.
Correct.
I just wanted to make sure of that.
That's where the
Because it says stop there. Right. So you're going to have the do not, do not enter on the opposite side. They can't go out that way.
Correct.
Go out towards
Right. And we have an arrow as
Or Cleveland. Okay.
We have an arrow as well painted on the ground that, that also indicates that you have to make a left.
Okay.
Essentially go behind the store.
Okay. So in addition to your signage, the standard signage and the arrows that hopefully should mitigate
Yes. There would be
in that area.
Correct.
Okay. I have more questions, but I'll hold off because obviously
Great.
that's one whole issue itself.
Anyone else?
I do.
Let me see this. Do you have any questions?
No.
I have a few things. First, let's start off with the circulation by the, where the pumps is, is, I'm sure you checked to make sure you have a truck sit, standing there, sitting there fueling, or dumping fuel in.
Right.
Fuel, whatever you want to call it. That you have enough circulation for cars to get around that?
Correct.
Okay. I'm sure, Mr. Disco, you'll confirm that. Uh, you have, there's not a lot of green. You know, we, you know, everything's pavement. And when you have thirty-four you need, and you're taking away six, we'll call the requirement forty, just off the bat. Okay? Is there something, and we've done this before, where we bank some of the vehicles? Where we add in maybe where your, I don't know, call it eleven area is, or, or, or maybe by the refuge area, where you're putting the garbage, some sort of, where we leave it green? And if there's a required need for it, then you can come back, you know, after six months, a year. It just seems like everything is just bulldozed down, and there's no, not a lot of, you know, green. It doesn't give the ability to, you know, when it rains, you know, some recharge areas and so forth. I know you may meet the stormwater requirements other ways, but we like to see a lot of green, you know.
Yeah, we
What is your thoughts on that, and all those other engineers?
Yes, we, we certainly understand the desire. I think we're below the allowable in previous coverage. That's a, a point, I think, that, that should be noted. So although there's not a lot of greenery within the interior of the site, when you look at the site in its entirety, um, you know, we are in compliance. And, and we have further reduced that with the added five foot of buffer. So I think overall, in terms of the balance of the greenery versus the hardscape, I think it's, um, I think it's in balance. In terms of banking the parking stalls, as, as opposed to providing them on day one, I would have some concerns to that element. Uh, yeah. So, so a facility of this nature, similar to, parking is treated similar to, I think, traffic, similar to structural, similar to stormwater, where you have to understand there's going to be some peaks and valleys to the demand. Um, and if the peaks aren't served in terms of traffic impact analysis, stormwater, structural components, and parking, and things of that nature that, that engineers and designers look at, you get into a potential failure mode. And based on Wawa's understanding of their own system and how they operate, fifty truly is a minimum number of parking stalls that the developer team, the designer team here is comfortable with. And if we were above that number, I think we, we probably would entertain the idea of banking. But we believe, Wawa believes, and the, the designer team believes, if we dip below that, um, there's a good chance that we reach that failure mode quote, or basically underserve the site with parking at peak times. Um, and then it starts to just degrade the overall operation and, and safety components. So I understand the intent. I, I certainly think there are times when banked parking is something appropriate for the board to consider. But I do feel strongly, based on my knowledge of Wawa, what they've provided, observing the sites myself, designing a number of them myself, that fifty is what this team would consider a true, a true minimum. I talked about us putting our best foot forward in two years to get to this point. I promise you, this, this, this plan has gone through twelve-plus iterations to get here. Um, this isn't just the first thing that, you know, we came up with and, and submitted an application. It has gone through a number of iterations, and we have looked to, to strike a balance, um, you know, to achieve what we think is a good plan.
Kind of, Mr. Disco, you, you went Wawa shopping?
Yeah.
The past couple
I did.
We'll call it. Did you see this many spots, the demand needed? I mean, I know it's not our area, but
Yeah. The Maplewood facility, which is brand new, again, it's got to be less than a year old essentially. Uh, it's a sixty-three hundred square foot building versus our fifty-five, eighty-five. They have fifty-four spaces to our fifty. The ratio is almost exact. It's, it's one space for about a hundred eleven, a hundred twelve square feet. At twelve-thirty today, they had thirty-eight vehicles parked in those fifty-four. So, uh, what I heard earlier was the testimony was the A M. is the peak. So if you get thirty-eight, again, I, I went at lunch, I figured for a Wawa, people are going to be going maybe for a sandwich as opposed to a six o'clock period.
So you make, so you think this makes sense?
It, it seems to make sense. The Avanel has fifty-eight spaces there, even though that, that store is smaller, but that is on Route one and nine. So I could see that there's certainly more vehicle trips coming.
Okay.
And there was twenty-eight vehicles there at twelve forty.
So that seems reasonable. Okay.
So, so the fifty, you know, I don't, initially, I thought the fifty was a little high. When I see the other Wawas, it's in line with the other Wawas. Um, you know, the idea of banking makes sense because you're not losing the parking. You just add it later. But, you know
But it sounds like from what you've went Wawa shopping
Again, fifty-four and fifty-eight, and the other two Wawas that I looked at today.
Okay. That's, that, that answers the question, helps justify. I, I think earlier you testified, you know, there's that space when you get out, that you're just going to have garbage cans, you know, refuge and stuff. There's one hundred percent no plans to put like tables and chairs and stuff like
No, tables, no chairs.
Okay, good. Um, so let's, who's the right person to discuss deliveries and deliveries times? Because I think that, and
Well, Jeff, and if there's particular questions, maybe when we take a break, I could get some more specific answers if, if we need it.
Well, I
If you're going to take a break. Maybe that's, maybe that's assuming.
I'm sure the chairman will take a break, especially because they want to know the baseball scores.
Oh, right. That's right. Today's the seventh game.
We're, we're going through with this delivery. I think we're going to have to get comfortable with what the times of deliveries range, you know, to make sure that those residential areas are not affected. I think the gas in the front is not an issue. So I think we'd like to get some testimony on what time the deliveries are going to be, you know, baking, as, as our engineers testified, you know, it's going to be a daily, you know, if that's a morning thing, you know, the morning rush, I mean, I'm on the train at five forty in the morning, I'm going to, if I pass Wawa, that's going to be, you know, are they going to be delivering at four thirty in the morning? Are they going to have the beeping thing? So I mean
And that nothing overlaps?
Yeah. What I would, what I would say is, I think, when we
I think we want a schedule.
Well, yeah, when, I, it would be difficult to come up with a schedule, but I think that what the board is asking us is to have times when we wouldn't have deliveries, right? You know, overnight or something of that nature. And, um, you know, that, that I think is something we can, we can get you an answer to shortly.
Okay. Um, when the deliveries come in there and there's trucks in that, is there enough egress for people to enter? I mean, I would, I guess I would assume so.
Yeah, there's a twelve-foot lane that we have striped, and it's concrete, and it's Yeah, there's a twelve-foot lane that we have striped and it's concrete and it's meant, you know, for the truck. And then on the plan currently, it's fifteen feet. What I proposed, we reduce it to thirteen feet. But in either way, there's essentially a twelve-foot lane for the truck and then a twelve-foot traveled lane. So even when the delivery truck is there, there's still a thirteen-foot travel lane, which is a healthy lane.
Then the signs, I think we need a walkthrough down sign lane to see where each sign's going to be so we can justify, say, the board can say, yeah, that's justified to do or not.
Yeah.
There's just too many that I've lost track. I mean, when we talk, I looked through, and I'll ask you a question, when I looked through the signs on your twenty-two, I think it was, twenty?
Yeah, twenty.
Twenty. You know, you have a lot of, you know, where you have the no surcharge PNC, you're adding in more.
Right, content, yeah.
So my question is, the intent of the Wawa with the gas, the smaller one on the Morris Turnpike, to shield the refuge?
No, that was just a ancillary benefit. The intent, the intent is to, is to ID the site, both the fuel offering as well as the Wawa convenience store. When we, when we look to take all the separate components and put them in the right place, we thought it was a nice synergy, so to speak.
You may want to go through the sheet twenty and correlate it with exhibit A two, your sign.
Yeah, what I would suggest to the board is, when we break, there are some people that have heard the sentiment here. When we break, if you'd allow the team to discuss a little bit, and then we will, we will give you that full inventory, either myself or another one of the professionals.
And if you could just find out like in the other Wawas, I mean, what time that are open? I imagine they're all open twenty-four hours.
Yes, I can tell you.
More or less a time schedule on some of those deliveries?
The bakery is what's tough, because the bakery deliveries have to be early because the bakery goods are in the morning and then they're used all day for sandwiches. So the breads are there all, you know, it's much easier for us to control the dairy deliveries. You know, those, those deliveries are much easier if the board has concerns. Those are the ones that we can, our tractor-trailers are the ones, those are the ones that we can restrict. And I'd just like the board to consider, right now we're talking about, as you know, these uses and that have taken us two years to get under control for these six lots are a variety of uses. At some point, the property next door may also change. So right now, we absolutely agree and acknowledge the concern for the residential use. But if there are conditions put into play because of the residential use, I'd just ask the board to consider an expiration of that possibility if and when.
Yeah.
If and when that use modifies and it's a commercial use, and the consideration then becomes different.
The board attorney can put a mechanism in the resolution that if those three things don't exist, he can apply to the zoning officer.
Or administrative.
Yes, but you may also want to determine the size of the truck that delivers baked, or baked goods because if it's not a fifty-three-foot eighteen-wheeler, but instead a box truck.
A box truck.
That may have a significant difference if that's the early morning truck.
That's all I have from me, but Paul.
Yes, I have a couple things, not much. I respectfully disagree with my colleague here on the parking. I think we should take all the parking we can get right now because there's no place to park off-site. And, and we have highly traveled, aggressively traveled roads on three sides here. So what are we buffering from? The buffer, the most important buffering and landscaping requirement is between us and the residential property that currently exists, and I think you've addressed that, so I would agree with you, Mr. Martell, on that. I'll have more questions for the traffic person, but in terms of ingress and egress to the site, just so we're all clear, from Morris Avenue, it's a left-in only, correct?
Correct.
Okay. From a Morris Turnpike, it's a right-in, right-out only.
Correct.
So there's no left turn from Morris Turnpike, from Morris Turnpike into the site?
No.
Just right-in, right-out?
No, other than the use of Cleveland.
Right, but on Morris Turnpike, right-in.
Right, not on the driveways.
Correct.
Now, the two driveways on Cleveland, are they both full movement driveways?
Correct.
All right, I think we want to hear from your traffic guy on that because that's a very heavily traveled road. You know, we appreciate you bringing us this traffic signal, but I can assure you, without that, this application would never have gotten approved. So you did your homework and, and that, the signal will be a good thing, I think, for the town.
Absolutely.
And a quick question, actually, just piggybacking on that, the signalized proposal right here from Cleveland Place, you're expanding that?
What we're doing is.
Making a two-lane right and two-lane left, how is that going to work, just briefly?
Right, so when you propose a traffic signal, you look to design the timing to optimize the overall service, right? So in this case, we have to consider just the traveling public on Morris Turnpike. And of course, we have to consider people that predominantly that want to make the left on Cleveland Place onto Morris Turnpike. And we can also have considered that some people might divert their trips that now use the intersection to the east that might decide this is now a more attractive route to use regardless.
They missed the turn.
We've estimated, we've estimated a certain volume of trips that are going to go left and a certain volume of trips that are going to go right.
Right.
We're providing an extra turn lane in the northern direction in order to provide more capacity to, for the, for the left movement predominantly, but also to serve as just general capacity to funnel cars through that intersection. In the absence of that lane, it might take a car that would have to travel a longer distance to get to the intersection in a single lane. With two lanes, you can, you can funnel, you could push more traffic through a green signal in less time. So it's essentially a capacity and timing component that the additional lane actually benefits the design and the operation of the signal.
The road is going to be widened?
On Cleveland, yes.
At that, just at that point, creating more of a.
Basically, from the driveway, the northern driveway to the intersection, it's going to have a, an additional lane at the applicant's expense, both for the construction, the design, the permitting, as well as the dedication of additional land to have enough width of the right-of-way.
I have no other questions at the moment.
Yeah, I'm okay for now, you've addressed most of mine, and the rest would be with traffic, so I'm okay, I'll go down.
I'm fine.
Okay, real quick, Mr. Michaels, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Most of my questions have been, have been addressed. A lot of the questions are going to be addressed by the planner. But just, and I'm not sure if I understood your answer before about seating. Were you talking about outdoor seating or indoor?
No seating, indoor hour or outdoor.
Okay, fine. It was my opinion, though, that those two spanner signs do need a, do need variance relief. I classify them as wall signs. Our ordinance really does not define wall signs, defines signage, but traditionally you'd expect a wall sign to be attached to a building. But those aren't really addressed, and I would still think that we need variances for those, for both of those signs that are proposed. And I think everything else that I had, except for what we hear from the planner, has been already addressed or I asked it earlier.
Okay. What I'd like to do, one second, real quick, is see if anyone from the public at this point have any questions that we can address for this witness pertaining to this. There will be a time again for this at the end, and then we'll take a small break after that. I'd just like to see anyone from the public, please come up, state your name, address, and pertaining to the information you've received so far, we may not be able to answer until we get more information, but just to. Can you, where'd Sam go?
My name is Wally Peterson. I reside at Ten Lions Place in Springfield. And my wife and I, Lois over here, own the three properties that are, which would be the next-door neighbors, which at the moment are residential. And I have to, again, compliment Mr. Disco, if he's the one that worked on the additional shrubbery and so forth.
So you own the one family that's.
We do, we own three, the three houses there.
Okay.
And we're hoping someday we'll be sitting on the other side of the table, asking the planning board possibly consideration to put something up. But in the meantime, we do have residential customers. And a number of our concerns you've already answered. But one thing that I'm looking at and concerns me a little bit, and you may already have shown the answer there, that a corner of the street that goes beside where the loading dock is, or the loading door. Now, can there be a truck there and then cars still running up and down along that? Or do they come in that access to Morris Avenue and have to turn left?
No, there would be, there would be a twelve-foot wide loading zone, which can accommodate the truck. And then there's a thirteen-foot wide lane that a vehicle could drive by when the truck is in the loading zone.
And I visualize in the middle of the night, those little lab mucklers that, here, running by the side of the house which the bedrooms are up, unfortunately are on that side of the road there. But as far as the delivery trucks, it looks to me from where our house is located, if they have to go in from Morris Avenue, can only go in the direction towards Morris Turnpike, that the cab of the truck would probably be well past the house. Would you agree with that, or would be closer to the front of the Wawa building? I'm thinking of a truck sitting idling. I know there's a three-minute rule or whatever it is that they can idle. And I know that most people do not adhere to that, most drivers, unless the police show up. And again, in the middle of the night, a truck sitting there idling, that could be quite a nuisance.
So the intended route is not to enter on Morris Avenue. So the intent is not for trucks to, to enter there. We've designed that as a passenger-vehicle driveway. The other larger width driveways would facilitate trucks on and off the property. To answer part of your question, second half of your question is, the truck would, the cab and the, and the trailer, the entire vehicle when loading would be beyond the plane of the back of your house. So you made a, you made a point there about extending back, I don't.
It would be facing towards Morris Avenue.
Correct, it would face toward, no, facing towards Morris Turnpike. And it would be, the entire truck, cab, and trailer would be essentially immediately adjacent to the proposed Wawa building. Or in, you know, parallel or in line with your, one of your home's residence backyard.
The other question I had is, and you may have mentioned it, I'm not sure, the possibility of an eight-foot fence along that property line. Would that come all the way out to Morris Avenue, or would it stop at the front of the house?
We would defer to the board's judgment, and if you had a request, I think we would, we would listen to it as you own the property. Our original proposal was to stop it at the face of your building. But we could in theory extend it to maybe the average front yard, which is the twenty-one foot. I think we would, we would listen to your request if you had one specifically.
I'm just trying to visualize what, I can see headlights as they come around that turn.
For the board, how long the fence is going to be, just with your thumb or finger?
So from the front face of the building to essentially where the residential property ends, and it's all in a commercial zone, but where that lot line is between Mr. Robertson's, or Mr. Peterson, Robertson or Peterson? Peterson, excuse me, or Mr. Peterson's property ends is where we intended the fence down.
Would there be a reason not to match it up with the landscape, with the landscape buffer?
Again, we are, we are open. I think some people like the idea of a fence out towards the street. Others visually consider it more of a side yard, backyard element, and don't like it in the front yard. So with the gentleman who owns the property, we're happy to end the fence where he sees fit. If he wants to give an opinion, if not, we'll listen to the board's request.
I, to me, it might be beneficial to come out closer to the street only because I can visualize headlights making that turn and shining on the front of the house. Again, I'm new to this, I could be wrong.
You're fine.
I'll bow to you.
No, you're fine, we're always wrong.
The other question, a couple, and the one that I have, and I'm not sure you're the one that can answer this, but Morris Avenue, the sanitary sewer on Morris Avenue has been a problem for a number of years, especially in heavy rainstorms. The manhole covers pop-off, pop-off the manhole, and water comes up two, three feet. And also floods the cellars of the houses of long.
Is that with flash flooding like that we have once in a long time?
Like the fifty, fifty-year rains that we have about every six months, you know what I mean? But it concerns me, I mean, I don't, possibly they're not even directing the sewer to Morris Avenue. They direct it to Morris Turnpike, I don't know. But it's something to consider, it's become a big problem and it happens quite often. We had to have it stall in the properties that we owned that one waved out.
Right.
So the water only goes out.
It shuts somewhat when it goes out, okay.
Yeah, I mean, in terms of just the impact of flooding in the area, obviously we have a proposed stormwater management system, so we're looking to do.
Stormwater, stormwater.
Correct.
Pretty good, I guess, but just the sewers itself, I would consider.
Right, but, so those surge impacts are typically, you know, groundwater and surface water driven, I think, when you have those surges with storms. But of course, we would comply with, with any requirement that the sewer authority would have in terms of that connection. Obviously, this one property probably isn't going to correct any of those issues because they're really not as a result of this particular property. But if there's anything that's reasonably, that can be done in terms of the connection method, et cetera, the sewer authority requires of us, then we would do that.
Pretty much more wanted to just make everyone aware that there is a sewer, sanitary sewer problem in that area. And I got a feeling that it runs down into the center of town right here. The other question is, that light, the sign that's going to be on the Morris Avenue, build brick. Is that a sign that would reflect light in all directions? Or does it look to me like maybe there's a brick, a picture coming out? You wouldn't see the sign in the center of the street. I'm sure the sign is designed to see.
Yeah, it's an internally illuminated sign. It's obviously meant to just identify that there is a customer building entrance for the retail offering. Obviously, very customary that a retail store would have a sign over, over one of its customer entrances. But it's an internally illuminated sign. It's not really meant to do anything other than just to be visible itself, not really shine light outward or do anything other than just really, just be something that's readily comprehensible in terms of the signage.
Do most Wawas have rear entrances, or is that just particularly to this building?
Well, yeah, just the only reason I stumble a little bit is the, just the characterization of quote rear. I wouldn't necessarily even call it either a rear. We call this a dual entrance building. So in cases where there is a, a parking lot, maybe on the opposite side of the fuel pumps, or there's multiple streets, or maybe within a shopping center, it is a, it is a style of building that they use situationally. It is not a rare use. I think they use it on, I would just estimate, but, you know, approximately, you know, thirty to fifty percent of their sites that they're designing now probably have this style of building, if not more.
Is that entrance absolutely necessary on Morris Avenue? Could they not turn on Cleveland Place and go either to the store or to the gas pumps?
Well, necessary is, is, is an interesting word to use. I think the site is best suited with that entrance. I think the parking lot supply is as such, and it's, it's a site with multiple roads, multiple ways in and out. When you have a, a site that has a lot depth and lot width configuration as we have, there, the idea of providing a, a supply of parking in an area that's not too close to the fuel pump area is a benefit to the overall site. So I would say that this particular site, given the roadway frontages, given the lot depth, lot width configuration, I do believe it's best suited with this, with this dual entrance facility.
I pretty much want to probably go to the gas pumps if they came in that entrance. I'm guessing that shoots right through to the front of the building.
Each, each customer has their, their intended need, so, you know, difficult to just kind of answer that broadband of a question. But some customers will look to the fuel offering, some will look for both.
Appreciate your foresight, taking into consideration the residential side of the property there. I guess we'll have an opportunity to ask other questions.
Yes.
Yes, you definitely will. There will be.
I'm ready for your breaks.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take a short, well, I want to see.
Thank you very much.
No, no, thank you. And if we needed to put a fence that would reduce sound there, is that something that we can do? Would you consider?
You mean a noise attenuation system? I, I actually wanted to ask Mr. Peterson if those were, if all those. I, I actually wanted to ask Mr. Peterson if those were, if all those homes are single-family or?
They are, yes.
And the three, the three properties that you own are in a line there?
They are, correct.
The one seems to have an incredible amount of parking in the rear.
Well, the two.
Yeah, sorry, yep.
The middle lot seems to have a lot of parking.
They do.
And the reason they have parking, the two houses are officially zoned commercial. The one next to Wawa and the middle one. And that happened back several years ago. We were renting to attorneys across the street in the office building, and they wanted to rent those buildings as conference rooms. Ended up using it strictly for storage for their files. But they paid to have them zoned commercial. When they moved out, just because of the force of least resistance, we rented a commercial, a residential again. So that's why there's so much parking back there.
So the residential is nonconforming, that they're zoned commercial?
They are zoned commercial, two of them. The third one may be, maybe, may have been zoned before we acquired it, I don't know.
Thank you.
Question?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else in the public have a question at this point before we go on break? Okay, seeing none, we're going to take Eve.
Just, I think the board was looking for some, oh, let me come back, some clarification on the fence, on the signs. Exactly which signs are where correlating sheet 20 with your colorized site plan exhibit there. And also some further clarification on the delivery schedules.
Yes.
And what types of trucks especially deliver the big goods. I think, and the question regarding whether the fence can also serve as a sound barrier. I know there.
I think the last question will bear relevance on that, that's why I wanted to explore that.
We'll come back in, at nine o'clock. It's 8:52 right now.
Obviously, with the one corner here is going out on here, there's probably the ability to go either way.
You may be, it doesn't mean the plant does, please speak up.
So why? Highlighted it.
Announcement that we're going to go to 10. Okay, just for the public and anyone else. We're going to cut this off at 10 o'clock. Do a public comment after. Yeah, we'll do a public comment after, if there's any more questions. I mean, just so you know, if we can get it through tonight, that's great. If not, I don't want to go much later than that. Any objections to that? Are we okay with that?
Should be done.
Okay. All right, so let's continue. We're.
So just in response to a couple of the questions, with regard to the fence issue, what we'd like the board to consider is rather than the board on board, which would have a gap, what we've done on another site, and I verified, is that we've done a solid fence, which prevents the gap. And it was also done in a similar situation where there was residential concern and concern about noise. That together with, we are prepared to do a stipulation, no tractor-trailer deliveries after 10:00 PM and before 6:00 AM. So I think that that should address the concerns for any of the disruption with regard to the, at least with regard to the existing nonconforming residential use that's next door, or the three lots, you know, next door. And we'd ask for the consideration, as I previously addressed, if and when those uses are changed, that we have the ability to go to the administrative officer or the zoning officer with that request. Mr. Martel can walk us through the signs on sheet 20. We have a couple of modifications that we can make that I think address some of the concerns on what I may have heard is over-intensification on the signage. So we can address that. So if we use, let's just, this is sheet 20 of 23, which you have in your package. And let's just start. And you have the site plan, which is sheet five of 23, is immediately to the right on the other easel. So Jeff, let's take the signs by type and then identify on the site plan where those signs are located.
Great. First, I'll go through the directional signs. The directional sign is detail five on sheet 20. We'll start off by just simply stating that we can remove the Wawa logo from this sign completely, narrow the scope of that sign to simply enter and exit, reduce it to a square footage of three square feet and a max height of three feet. The top of the sign would be three feet, total area would be three square feet, and the content would be narrowed down to simply enter and exit.
Can you point every one of them out, please?
Yes. There is an enter sign at the entrance location on Morris Avenue. Obviously, wayfinding being the intent of all of these signs. There is an enter and exit at the southern driveway of Cleveland Place. There is an enter and exit on the northern driveway on Cleveland Place. And there is an enter and exit on the driveway of Morris Turnpike. Again, content will be reduced to simply enter and exit. Wayfinding signs, you'll hear from the other professionals, but really just trying to direct vehicles to the proper locations.
So that would be an elimination of seven variances by removing the Wawa from those signs. And we would also be reducing them in size and height. Let me just ask Mr. Martel, in your experience with the industry with this type of use, is it commonplace and required in exercise of your profession as a civil engineer for those signs to be included on the site plan for purposes of wayfinding?
Yeah, it's commonplace and it's typically good design practice, yes, for directional purposes.
Okay, so let's move on now to the freestanding sign, which is the monument sign, which is contained on the lower right-hand side of sheet 20 of 23. The detail is on that sheet. And we have it also shown on sheet five of 23, where you testified it was located next to the refuse, west of the refuse enclosure. Is that correct? And you're pointing to that location?
Correct. So the intent of this sign is obviously for patrons on Morris Avenue. There is no visual connectivity that's reasonable between Morris Turnpike and Morris Avenue. So one sign doesn't fit the bill on this particular site, in our opinion. So what we've done is a monument sign, which we think is more keeping in the character of Morris Avenue. Its total height is seven feet 10 inches. Its total area is identified as 49.87 square feet. It has the Wawa logo, and it has two fuel prices. And it's on a stone base that is two feet. The total height, seven feet 10, is just slightly less than actually the trash enclosure. What I would note is that we did intentionally put it at the upstream side of traffic. We think that's the best location for it. And in this particular case, I think that's also good planning relative to the single-family residential, that the actual, the physical trash enclosure itself is now the shield to that sign. So it's not visible, even if the closest home to work walkout is her front door, or one of the rental people, and they look. or one of the rental people, and they look right, they can't physically see the sign. So it's in a good location, in our opinion.
Explain the two sides of the sign. I mean, I get that the...
Yeah, this is a detail, this is a corporate...
Why do you need two sides?
Yeah, it's a corporate detail. I think in this particular setting...
It should be one-sided.
The one side does not serve a reasonable purpose. We understand that.
So you can revise that. So the testimony is that, from a shielding standpoint, because this is another sign that I don't necessarily need, but it does provide benefit because you are gonna be able to shield out the refuge area at similar heights?
Yeah, I think it comes with benefit, and it comes with, you know, this is obviously planning testimony, but it comes with no detriment, you know, no engineering or nuisance component downside.
Okay, thank you.
Just in terms of that question, Mr. Martel, the administrative code in New Jersey requires that pricing signs be readily visible from the adjacent roadway. In your opinion, would the sign as detailed on Morris Avenue and contained on the two sheets that you just referred to, would the inclusion of the pricing on that sign for motorists traveling on Morris Avenue provide those motorists with the knowledge?
Yeah, it provides that purpose, and only a sign on Morris Avenue could provide that purpose. I don't think it's reasonable to assume that the sign on Morris Turnpike provides that purpose. So yes, it provides it, and I think it's the best location to provide it.
Okay.
The next sign is the freestanding sign, which is a total of 20 feet high. It has the Wawa band at the top, which we noted, if it was just that Wawa top cabinet, it would be compliant at 24 square feet. But we do have the fuel pricing under it as well, so we've asked for variance for that purpose, as well as the height. I will say that in talking to the team, that it makes a lot of sense to reduce this to 18 feet, as opposed to 20 feet. In terms of a site triangle perspective, Morris Turnpike is a two-way street. So now we have to think about people at Cleveland Place and the driveway at Morris Turnpike having safe distance. If we reduce the total height to 18 feet, what we've done is we've taken that under clearance to eight feet, which is really the minimum under clearance that is a documented engineering standard for the purpose of site distance. So usually between that three-to-eight-foot range, that's where you imagine sitting in your car. That's your, essentially, your viewpoint to see other, to other traveling cars. So that would bring the total height down to 18 feet. And of course, we know that the height, or the total area variance is really driven by the need for this particular retail use to have that, those fuel prices there. I will say that we're only advertising two fuel prices when we sell four different grades of fuel. And I say "we," meaning Wawa in this case. So there's, there's really a intent here to, you know, reduce that overall content of that messaging and not look to get every single price out on that sign.
What is the height of our ordinance, Mr. Disco?
12 feet.
12 feet is the maximum?
The zone, yeah.
The zone. Do we feel that 18 is justified? I mean, the six feet, I'm six feet tall, and does it need to be six feet higher? That's my question. Is that justified? I don't know what the board thinks.
I think they're trying to justify it on the basis you have to see across Morris Turnpike and then over. Is that correct?
Yeah, and I think, I think you'll hear more testimony from our traffic engineer as to the minimum acceptable safe clearance, particularly along a state highway, inclusive of vehicular traffic, car traffic, as well as truck traffic in the driver's eye, as a different height.
Good point, good point. I just don't wanna get a, you know, in the habit of then having all these signs and they look like Route 22 again.
Understood, understood.
But if there's reasons for it, that would be very good to provide.
Great. And then moving on, we have the two wall signs. There is detail number two is the 44, it's labeled as the 44-inch Wawa wall sign. That is on the face of the building, the northern side facing the fuel pumps. The 32-inch wall sign, as I stated, is on the more subtle entrance feature. And again, keeping with the character and understanding, there is a little bit of a different character vibe on Morris Avenue. On Morris Turnpike, we've taken the smaller wall sign and the monument-style sign on Morris Avenue, the larger wall sign on the entrance tower, along with the freestanding sign.
So the ordinance allows three wall signs because we have three frontages. So we could technically put a wall sign facing Cleveland as well, correct? But we haven't done that.
Right. If you ignored for a second the...
I didn't get to the spanner signs.
Right. If you ignore that for a second and you say, "We have a convenience store," it would be compliant to have a wall sign facing Cleveland. Obviously, we haven't proposed that. We don't think that's necessarily a real, you know, capture area. And really, the reason that we want those two signs is because we have two customer entrances that we're really treating equally in terms of how we've designed the site. So Cleveland doesn't warrant a sign, in our opinion.
And I heard the planner's testimony that we were treating the spanner signs as wall signs because there's no other way to treat them by the code. So that's how we treated them, too. So they're not wall signs technically because they're not attached to a structure, a building, but we're treating the spanner signs as wall signs, correct?
Right. And what I would say is we've labeled two banner signs, one on the east side, which would...
If we go back, if we go back to the Wawa building, the 44 and the 32, does that comply with ordinance?
The, you mean, the width?
Yeah. Well, the, yeah, the 44, it says 44 illuminated wall sign with Goose logo.
I think, I think, again, the ordinance, the five-foot height limitation includes logos and, you know...
So I'll rephrase for our planner. Do you feel that this, the building justifies the size of the sign? Is it, is it, that's a good way of saying it?
Well, yes, it does justify the width and the square footage of the sign. Mr. Disco's correct that the maximum height is five feet, and this is a little bit more than five feet in height. But that, I believe, accommodates their logo. So, but the, it's within the 60% of the wall width, and it's within the 10% of the area of the wall.
You're comfortable?
So it's comfortable, I'm comfortable with the size.
Okay, that's fine.
And what I would just offer to the board is, just on the visual, everybody can draw their own opinion. But in terms of scaling, massing, if you envision this as a multi-tenant building or four commercial lots, you know, you could have, in theory, four of these signs on this, on this lot. But having one, single-tenant building consolidating four commercial lots on a commercial road, I think when you, when you think about the net of what's being provided, I think it's much less than what could physically be there even in a compliance setting. So the last is the banner signs?
I just wanna touch on the spanner. The spanner signs, we've included, as I said, because there's no definition of how to treat them in the code. They're on red panels. The spanner signs are basically red panels that extend over the pumps, correct?
Correct.
So how they're being characterized as signs, that I understand it, is because we have the word "Wawa" on that red panel.
Yes, that's semi-understanding as well.
So the red panel could exist without...
It's a building element of the quote accessory structure. So in theory, without any advertising or branding element, I think, you know, barring any contrary opinion of the board's planner, it would feel like that, that would not be a sign if it didn't have the word "Wawa" on it.
To me, I agree.
Yes, I would agree as well.
Other gas stations would have that. I think that's, in my opinion, I don't know if the board feels, but I agree with that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the signs in the HC zone have a minimum clearance to the bottom of seven feet. So I think you heard that they were, had lowered that to eight feet. That's over the minimum in the other zone that might be applicable. Could argue from eight to seven, but I think, you know, eight feet fits in that in terms of the clearance and the site issue.
So I think that was the summary of the signs that you requested. So I think, I think we answered the board's questions relative to the deliveries and the signage before the break.
Yep. Mr. Chairman, I just have just one comment on something that was mentioned earlier about the fence being a solid fence, and I agree that that's a good solution to that. Just with the proviso that it is the finished side on both sides, so both the Wawa side and the residential side are both...
That's not a problem.
I didn't think it would be. Okay, that's fine. You're okay with that. All right, very good, thank you.
So you'll revise the sign detail to reflect that the sign on Morris Turnpike, that Morris Avenue will have a double stack?
Yes, we'll have to revise the package to address all the comments from Mr. Disco in any event, and planner.
Okay, keep going, yep.
I'm done with Mr. Martel. So other than board questions and additional public questions, we can move on to traffic whenever you're done.
I'll see if the board has any other questions for this. Or should we have some more public for him? Well, we could, all right. I mean, the public we could do at the end, if that's all right.
He's not going anywhere. He'll be here.
Yeah, right before, I think the public addressed, had an opportunity. We'll have another opportunity before we leave.
Okay. I'd like to call Mr. Steiger. And while Mr. Steiger's coming up, I just wanna note for the record that we presented and filed a traffic analysis, but the use is permitted. So the use itself is not triggering the need for a traffic engineer, but we do have an obligation to demonstrate onsite safety and satisfaction of your professionals. So to that end, we're happy to present Mr. Steiger and also to update the board with regard to DOT.
Appreciate that you did, thank you.
And I'm happy to be here tonight, also.
Everybody's so happy.
Anybody but, anyone, except for anyone who's a Dodger fan or a...
Oh, what's the score?
I don't wanna know.
Oh.
With today's technology, we could always watch it later.
Okay, all right.
Sorry to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
All right, could you state your name, spell your last name for the record?
Yes, my name is Joseph Steiger, S.T.A.I.G.A.R.
Mr. Steiger, could you, in similar vein to Mr. Martel, present the board with your educational and professional background, please?
Yes, I have a bachelor of science, a master's science degrees in civil engineering from New Jersey Institute of Technology. I've also been an adjunct professor of traffic engineering at NJIT. I hold a professional engineer's license in the state of New Jersey, as well as other states in the Northeast. I've appeared before this board on numerous occasions. Yes, I know Mr. Tiger as well, from past experience. And yes, and I was a...
He was hired.
Yes, I was a professional consultant for the board, yes.
And you've been accepted in connection with similar applications?
Yes, Wawa's, quick checks, and gasoline stations, and convenience stores.
Okay. And you've supplied the traffic impact analysis that was on file with the application, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
And you personally are also involved with the DOT application that Mr. Martel and I both referenced earlier, is that correct?
Yes, met with DOT.
Okay. So I'm gonna ask you, bearing note of, you know, the fact that we are permitted use to take the board and the public through the steps that you undertook relative to your analysis of the existing traffic conditions, whether there was a warrant for the traffic signalization even before Wawa came before the board this evening, and what, what steps you feel have been taken to ensure a safe pedestrian and vehicular pattern of travel for this use?
Yes. We knew that the, a key aspect to the process of this Wawa application would be the signalization of Cleveland. And discussing with DOT and some of the professionals within the township, we knew the problems of, particularly of the intersection of Cleveland and Morris Turnpike. We're also cognizant of the Chipotle application, which disallowed left turns out of the site to keep traffic away from that intersection. So we understood that there was, it was problematic. And being that we knew it was a key aspect to the application, we focused much of our design on enhancing that intersection, not only in terms of capacity, but also safety as well. We obtained accident reports for the intersection. We conferred with Officer Rachel, Jonathan Rachel, the traffic officer as well, to gain some knowledge of what the experience has been at that intersection so that we could properly design it. Key aspect that was pointed out by Mr. Martel, that we're not only sticking a traffic signal, plunking it in the intersection, we're making improvements to that intersection as well, particularly widening the northbound approach of Cleveland Avenue, cutting into, into the applicant's property in order to make that widening, reducing the actual property to a degree. The key to that intersection also will be to facilitate the westbound left turns. We're gonna have a three-phase signal. So the, as the cycle goes through, the westbound will get its own green with a green arrow. So you'll be able to make a left turn onto Cleveland Place. And then both east and west will go, and then the northbound will go. So it'll be a three-cycle, a three-phased cycle, which will enhance safety and the capacity and the ability to get into the Wawa site safely. Because as you heard from Mr. Martel, the driveway on Morris Turnpike will be a right-in, right-out only. So westbound maneuvers into the site will be a left turn onto Cleveland and then into the site. So in order to go through the process, the board has a copy of our traffic report. That traffic report, essentially the same traffic report with specific information that DOT was looking for, was submitted to DOT and is part of the application. So they'll be reviewing it in the sense of when we took the traffic counts, and particularly, were there any violations to levels of service? Now, levels of service, you've heard from traffic engineers A through F. When this additional traffic that would be generated by the proposal is superimposed onto existing volumes, would there be any degradations in the level of service? And the traffic report that we did prepare does conclude and comes up with those levels of services that do not violate DOT criteria in terms of level of service, and essentially does not degrade. The bottom line is that this intersection particularly, it will operate safer and with more capacity with this project than it, as it currently does. And that's something to say about an application. Usually, you're before boards and saying that, okay, well, we're gonna have an impact, but it's not a big impact, or it's not significant. In this case, I believe that the roadway network is going to have a better ability to handle traffic in terms of capacity, process more vehicles in the area, but also improve safety, and that's the key aspect. One of the important factors of, when I say improve capacity, the problem system is, is right here, Milburn Avenue, Voltrissault, and Morris Avenue tying into the Turnpike, Morris Turnpike. What we're able to do with the signal and the enhancements of this, of this movement is that much of the traffic on Morris Avenue that wants to head in a westbound direction bypasses Cleveland because it's just so difficult to make that left-hand turn, that there's a heavy left turn at the, at the, I'll say, the Morris Avenue, Morris Turnpike intersection. We believe that with the enhancements that we're doing on Cleveland, that you will divert some of that traffic that's making that maneuver over to Cleveland to alleviate to a degree what's happening at this pinch point. It'll make things better, not, it's not gonna remove the lines of cars that we see at times, but it'll reduce the queuing, the delays that happen at the, at the intersection to the east. So overall, and the other factor is that we did a, what's called a simulation model to coordinate the traffic signals between Milburn, from Milburn Avenue all the way to Broad Street. So they'll be timed sequentially so that traffic will move progressionally quicker and faster and through the intersection in a much better manner. Meaning that when you, one light turns green, you go through that light, the next light doesn't turn red. It stays green so they can process the maximum amount of vehicles through those intersections. So I think, in terms of traffic impact, we're making things better. So I think, in terms of traffic impact, we're making things better in many ways, so that this application will be an overall improvement to the roadway network in the area. The next aspect I'll just touch on, because I believe Mr. Martel handled it very well in terms of how the interior site will operate. We do have a total of four driveways, but the key driveways that are on, I'll call them the primary roads, on Morris Turnpike will be a right-in, right-out only, no left turns. And the Morris Avenue driveway will be a left turn in only, which can only make, as Morris Avenue is a one-way. We do have the two driveways on Cleveland Place. Now, we strategically placed those two driveways at, on Cleveland, to facilitate internal movements more efficiently, so that people aren't using the interior roadways, I'll call it as a raceway, that they want to get from point A to point B, and you're only condensing everything to one driveway. So we've strategically placed them, two driveways, more or less between the activity around the gasoline fuel pumps, or fuel pumps, and the parking area of the convenience store. Otherwise, I think we're going to, we would have too much traffic concentrated on one location, and all the traffic riding around the site to get to those locations. So, the need for the two driveway system, I think, is important in improving traffic safety of the site itself. We've designed it to accommodate the truck movements through the site, for the deliveries. We've talked about the parking. We have adequate parking, and we need the 50 spaces over and above what the ordinance requires, because of the type of use and what the experience are at Wawa's versus other retail uses. Want to touch back on DOT just a little bit more. We did have two meetings with DOT, what are called pre-application meetings, and they were fairly intense. Normally, when you meet with DOT, you itemize, get a layout, a quick layout of what the site is all about. Well, what we gave DOT was our simulation model. I mean, we did a lot of technical upfront work to show DOT that adding a signal, another signal, in relatively close proximity to existing signals would not be problematic in terms of queuing, in terms of progression along the Morris Turnpike corridor. And to show them that, well, right now, that signal, I mean, that intersection warrants a signal, based on the accident history, based on the volume that goes through that intersection. You have to, you need to prove to DOT, and it's a requirement, that you meet certain warrants. Well, right now, those warrants are met without the Wawa. It's begging for a signal, in essence. And we had to go through already a laborious process through DOT in proving that it would not be detrimental to their state highway. And I think we've proven that to them already through the pre-application process. We've submitted the actual application forms several weeks ago. We're going through that review process right now with them. But conceptually, they've approved it, they've agreed that it's a good idea to have this signal here. It seemed to them, with that preliminary work that we gave them, it makes sense to them. And now we're going through that formal process of an actual application, and we're hoping to hear from them within the month.
So, one question. Jeff testified to the reduced-size wayfinding signs without the Wawa verbiage on the signs.
Correct.
As a traffic engineer, would it be your opinion that those signs are a necessary component of the site plan to afford traffic safety, or guarantee traffic safety, or enhance traffic safety, the enter and exit signs?
Yes, I, from a strictly traffic safety aspect, having the Wawa with the enter and the exit is optimum. It provides that secondary reinforcement for a driver to locate the actual locations. When they see the Wawa logo, when they see the entrance/exit sign, they know exactly where they're headed. I think we've compromised to a degree to be sensitive to your, the township's ordinance. We'll take the Wawa off of it. Key component is entrance and exit. It'd be nice to have the Wawa too, but again, sensitivity of your ordinance, we've since removed that. But they are a good enhancement to traffic safety.
And Mr. Martel testified to the larger number of existing driveways that service the six lots that comprise, or six uses that comprise the property, that's before the board, that we've now reduced to the two driveways on Cleveland, and the one on Morris Turnpike, and the one on Morris Avenue.
We've reduced it in half. We're going from eight to four. And I'll even call it maybe three and a half, because the one driveway on Morris Avenue is an enter only, and the one on Turnpike is right-in, right-out only.
And all new sidewalks are being proposed, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
So from a pedestrian standpoint, there will be access on all three sides as well?
Yes, the reduction, yes, the reduction of the number of driveways and the full movements, as well as the introduction of all the sidewalks, will be enhancement to pedestrian safety and access surrounding the site.
I don't have anything further for Mr. Steiger.
Okay, at this point, we'll take any questions while we have you. I'll start here. Anything in particular?
Yeah.
Okay, go.
Have you looked at where the alignment of where your exits are to Chapulteza, now that you know where that site is, and make sure you're not going to have a queuing of lefts and rights? I mean, I don't remember where it was, but probably close.
No. And the good thing is that, as our lefts, and it deals with the two driveways, if there is an unforeseen occurrence that you have a queue line that blocks, and I'm going in a northbound direction on Cleveland towards Morris Turnpike, that blocks the first driveway, you have the ability to bypass that first driveway and go down to the next driveway. So, and there won't be any blockage at the next one, because there's, the queue wouldn't go that far in a northbound direction.
See, you actually answered my second question. Really, my first question was, is if a car is exiting Chapulteza, and someone is exiting Wawa, could they conflict? Where's the alignment of the driveways?
Yeah, I believe, I believe we show that, and I'm going to, I need to confer with Mr. Martel.
Because you can have conflicting turns.
I think we don't have the actual location of the driveways, but it is essentially aligned. You can see the property of the Chapulteza is in this, I'll call it the northeast corner of that block on the opposite side of Cleveland of us, and the driveway is in the back, essentially aligned.
Something to look at for the next meeting, just to make sure that, from the safety standpoint. And then the only other question I had is, you know, this may not be appropriate, is when you pull, when someone comes in and makes the turn, you know, there could be some pedestrians walking in the park.
Where at, on the, on Cleveland?
Cleveland, right across from Chapulteza, I call it, the first entrance. Is there anything planned, or what is your expert opinion about putting in some sort of, you know, so when someone comes in, they noticeable to know that they're in the lot, and so if there's people there, you know, like the uneven pavement, so...
Well, we will have a crosswalk at that location, the stop bar, the double-yellow line. I don't think we need to have uneven surface, which in essence could be a tripping hazard as well. But I think the indication clearly that there's a driveway there, there's a crosswalk there, it's two sidewalks, handicap ramps, which will have a different colorization, stop bar, yellow, double-yellow line, all fits in with the visual aspect that you'll know that you're crossing a pedestrian area.
Okay. So the only thing would be to try to show where the Chapulteza is?
Yeah, and see how that interaction with the two driveways operate now. Right now, Chapulteza has no left turn, so we think, we were looking...
They're going to come back.
Exactly, yeah, so...
And that was actually brought up in the meeting, that if there was a light, that they can avoid that, or whatever you want to call it.
Understood.
They will be coming back for it.
And I hope they pay for half the light as well.
And then, one last thing, sorry. If this application is, I'm sure you agree, it would be conditioned on that traffic light, obviously.
It would be conditioned upon all outside agency approvals.
Okay, so, good. What was your last question?
Can I just, in that, Mr. Chairman, in reference to what was just stated, not only conditioned upon, but that the Wawa couldn't operate until that signal was operational?
That's a good point.
Would that be agreed to?
Okay, so you agree to that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, because theoretically, you can get a DOT approval without a signal, just the DOT approval, and so, we're clear on that.
Well, and I think that we have to continue working with the township in that vein, because the township has been very helpful in terms of making that approach with the DOT. So, it has to be a continued joint partnership in that.
Yeah, no, I'm sure that you'll have the towns' same partnership. It's just before, it has to be done before you start selling it again.
A quick question. I think you were going to give traffic testimony about the traffic benefits of having an 18-foot sign versus a 12-foot sign in the front?
Yeah.
Good, thanks.
I was going to ask Mr. Steiger about that clearance. Mr. Martel testified to it, but if you could touch upon it, and I made reference to the truckers' line of sight, which I, you know, I shouldn't do in terms of testimony, but, so if you could address that.
And I want to just preface it that, out of any other type of retail, a convenience store with fueling sales demands the most advanced warning than all other retails. And whereas your ordinance, once it operates in the essence of one size fits all, we know that it doesn't always fit all. And so, the price component is as important, if not more important, than the name itself. People price shop, and if you drop the price of gas one penny tomorrow, you're going to sell more gas tomorrow than you did today. And the name Wawa also is an important aspect. People make impulse decisions. If they see that penny or two pennies less than they saw down the road, they're going to stop and pull in. So they're making those impulse decisions on the roadway. So, the identification of this sign, or that, I'll say, the top component is very important for that judgment call as people drive. And then in terms of the under clearance, I think your ordinance recognizes that seven feet are, in our industry, we always use eight feet as a standard, I mean, plus or minus. So that eight-foot under clearance really is the minimum desirable, I'll say minimal desirable, in terms of providing adequate site distance underneath the sign, particularly for truckers, for a lot of SUV drivers and so forth. So, for traffic safety purposes, I believe that the variance that being requested is justified.
Okay. Mr. Steiger, three questions. One is, as you correctly pointed out, more vehicles will now make the left onto Cleveland as opposed to going down to Voltershall and Milburn Avenue, to make that, left onto Cleveland, to make the left onto Morris Turnpike. And because to get into the Wawa going west on Morris Turnpike, you need to make the left onto Cleveland and go into one of the entrances on Cleveland. Are you concerned about the queuing on Cleveland to make that left turn onto Morris Turnpike blocking either of those entrances?
Yeah, and that's, raised a good point. And that's why we widened it to two lanes. Whereas, we were going to increase the left turn volume, we are providing two left turns and doubling that capacity, in essence. Plus, we're giving it the green time that's needed so that it doesn't block those driveways. So, at times during peak hours, the first driveway may indeed be blocked, but then that allows those vehicles on Cleveland to bypass that first driveway, rather than just sit in there and wait for that light to turn green. They see the next sign, they see the entrance, the next driveway, I should say, and they can pull in that location under those rare occasions and then enter the site.
Yeah, okay, good. That's what I thought you were trying to accomplish there. As, I don't know if you're familiar with Morris Avenue, is it comes down from Summit. It's a little bit of a free-for-all, because you're coming down from Summit, and there's no striping. It's one or two lanes. You have a light right at the entrance to 78, and you have one or two lanes, because there is no striping, so it's kind of like every man for himself. And then you have the ramp from 78, I guess it is, eastbound, that dumps onto that Morris Avenue as well. And a lot of people take that ramp and then try to get over to the left to go into Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, or make that turn on Cleveland. So, there's a lot of action right there. Have you looked at that, and should we consider restriping, or...I'd love to get your recommendation on how to handle that, because cars are coming from the right lane as they come off 78, and they're trying to get all the way to the left. So you've got one or two cars coming down from Summit, one car coming off 78, making that left, and cars, you know, I think it's a little bit of a mess over there.
Yeah, we didn't, I know exactly what you're saying. I've taken that exit quite a few times, and even tried to get into Bed Bath &amp; Beyond at times. We are beyond, at least, Cleveland is quite a few hundred feet beyond that. If, if in essence, someone doesn't feel comfortable making those maneuvers to get into Cleveland, they do have the same ability to maintain that they do now in using that turn. So we're hoping, believe that alleviating the congestion that currently, and the difficulties of making those left turns at Cleveland, will attract more vehicles, but it may not necessarily be those that are coming off of 78, the ones that are 24. They'll be the ones that are already in that left lane that may make that maneuver. It's going to be what the driver feels comfortable in doing.
Yeah, that's something maybe we should, the town should look at.
Yeah, I think it's beyond our capabilities. It's most likely under state jurisdiction.
That's what I'm thinking, yeah.
And we'd be happy to work with, and we've done it before, work with your township people. But if it comes under your letterhead, it means a lot more than if it comes under our letterhead.
Yeah. I mean, I don't, I don't think there's any major improvement that can happen there, but I think there should be some striping to really direct people more effectively. And then, my last question is, given the proximity of the new signal at Cleveland and Morris Turnpike to the one at, what is it, Broad and Morris, do those signals have to be synced because of their proximity or their closeness?
Yes, they're going to be synchronized. The timing and the cycle lengths are going to be synchronized, so that, as I pointed out before, when one turns green, the next one doesn't turn red, and then turn red, that they're, they can process more efficiently each other. So yes, they will be coordinated and synchronized.
And so, in your professional opinion, the driveway arrangement, and the street arrangement around the site will improve, I know it'll improve the traffic off-site, but the onsite circulation will be, and the entrance and exit will be safe and appropriate?
Yes. We did a level of service, site distance calculations, make sure that they would operate safely. And I know you had mentioned, well, do we really need two there versus one? I think I get, just by orienting how the two will operate, particularly for the left turns, but also, it shortcuts people traveling onsite. You're going to have quite a bit of pedestrian traffic, people crossing, you know, the parking lanes and all. If we can get them from parking space to the driveway in a much more efficient, short route, it's safe, going to be safer on the inside as well.
Thank you. No further questions.
Any questions?
No.
Any questions?
Not this time.
Nope, I think mine were answered as well in that last one, so we're good.
Okay, thank you.
What time are we? What was your next, well, 10 minutes?
Planner. It's just a matter of pulling together the testimony. I think we can do it pretty quickly.
Yeah, all right. We'll give it a shot. If not, we'll get the gong out, and then it'll be over.
Okay. Just don't throw anything.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, please state your first and last name, spell your last name for the record.
I'll spell both. It's Crei, C-R-E-I-G-H, Rachen, R-A-H-E-N-K-A-N-G.
Great, same question, professional and educational background?
Short version, I've been planning for 36 years, licensed in New Jersey for 22. I'm adjunct at Rowan. I've been qualified in trial courts in the state over 100 times, and appear readily before planning and zoning.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay. You've been here tonight for the testimony of Mr. Martel and Mr. Steiger, and you also were present for preparation for tonight's hearing, correct?
I was, yes.
And you've had an opportunity to review the reports by the board's professionals, correct?
I have.
And you've certainly heard the board's questions tonight, and questions from members of the public, correct?
I have.
Okay. And we have a litany of variances, some that are signage... And we have a litany of variances, some that are signage-related, some that are building-related.
Yes.
So you're prepared under NJSA forty, fifty-five D dash seventy, C1 and C2, to give testimony regarding that in terms of the positive and the negative criteria?
I am.
Okay, ask you to do that.
In attendant fashion.
Okay.
Let me first make things efficient by saying-
We can go a little over.
Okay. Mr. Martel is a very good expert. He has described to you where all of the variances are, so I'm going to stay away from re-describing them to you and jump into the planning issues. And where I have something specific to say about a variance that I think was missed, I'll add that to it. But let me accept Mr. Martel's testimony as if I've given it for the evening. In terms of classification, obviously we're C2s, whereas Mr. Michaels has identified that it's important to say we're influenced by having three fronts, and it's important that that factors into our variances. But where they become particularly important, for example, the accessory structure, the canopy and the gas pumps, even if we had one front, we'd be asking for that variance to be in the front because that's inherently essentially part of the nature of this use. So while three fronts is important, it's still important that we talk about the need for that activity to occur in the front relative to the road in its certain. In terms of C2s, we're looking at the public purposes that we're advancing, I would suggest to you that there are four, H, M, I and G. H goes to the planning of transportation. You've heard the addition of the light, the reduction in the number of curb cuts, a shift to more pass-by traffic than destination traffic for employers that are on the site. So for those three reasons, we are substantially improving the transportation, circulation and safety in the area in the purpose H. Purpose A is a public and private cooperation towards the efficient use of land. Here we've got obviously clearly a public cooperation with the municipality, leading the way and getting the traffic light, working with the developer who's funding it. That's exactly the kind of public-private cooperation that the municipal law is trying to encourage through the land use process. Point to purpose I, this is where planners go for revitalization. You've got six uses on this site, three that are essentially linear commercial buildings aiming away from the street, sort of deep buildings with multi-tenant, and three non-conforming structures on the rear, historically residential, over the course of history, sometimes residential, sometimes not. But here we are reducing the non-conformities by eliminating non-conforming uses. We're also eliminating a whole series of variances that exist on those individual sites in terms of setbacks. So while this site had some variances, in net, there's substantially fewer that exist on those six uses on this particular tract that exist there today. So we've got revitalization, the aesthetics, the landscaping, and substantially bringing this into greater zoning conformity than existing conditions. And lastly, G is variety of uses. This is an appropriate use in this corridor, serves a public need. The combination of retail sale of fuels with food and other convenient services in this area will be an advantage to the motor and residential public in that area. Let me deal with the other planning issues that typically comes at the end, and that's whether these variances can be granted without being contrary to the intent of your zone plan. Here, your master plan and two reexamination reports primarily focus on the communities downtown and talking about the GC, the general commercial district. This is a general commercial district. It's meant to be the more intense of your commercial districts. But it always talks about increasing the variety of uses, adding greary. While Mr. Steiger talked about the landscaping not being a buffer to anything around the outside, it's important that your master plans, this is talked about as a gateway. So the intention in working landscaping very strongly in the corners is to enhance and facilitate this being a greener entry into your community than exists currently. So there's nothing about the variances for this particular site or this use that would limit the usability of other GC tracks in the area. So there's no detriment to the zone and the ability of other tracks in the zone to be used. In terms of the specific variances, there are a couple of things I would add without being too redundant. The primary bulk variance is our front yard setback. Your ordinance is very complicated and there was some confusion over this. This is a district in which the buildings are meant to be built to the roads in some fashion, but we're replacing three buildings that are essentially linear away from the road. There is no real pedestrian interest along this corridor, so it's not as if you're losing something by having those removed. And while this is a deeper front yard setback than you would typically want to see in an area where you've got sort of retail uses on both sides, that's not really the situation here. Chipotle going on the corner is not a retail hint with windows forward to the street either. We're on a corner, they're going to cut the corners and move around. So you're not having a detriment to a sidewalk pattern with linear windows on it that the ordinance is contemplating specifically because of the context in which this lot is located. So here, I think it's an appropriate setback, a variance to allow a setback greater than the norm. Let me touch on this accessory structure. This is something that we all wrestle with from a planning perspective, what to call this thing. By calling it an accessory structure, we trap ourselves by falling into the residential zone where accessory structures exist. And that's where the fifteen-foot height comes from. That's typically your shed and the kinds of things that you see. You can't have it in the front yard in a residential neighborhood. So by calling it an accessory structure, which aren't permitted in that commercial district anyway, we inherit these bulk standards that really don't fit in this context. In terms of the height of the canopy, yes, we're above what a shed would be, but we're well below what a permitted building in this area would be. So visually, as you're going down the road, this is not going to be bigger than the other buildings. It's going to fit in what this district would expect to see in terms of building. And simply by calling it a structure in your code that gets us into these sort of strange variances, it's a very appropriate structure to be here. And it's not just the canopy, it's everything that goes with the canopy. It's the boost, the stand-in, the gas pumps. They're all accessory structures as one package. And obviously, this goes in the front yard, at least one of the front yards. You're trying to serve the motor and public. That's where it's going to be, that's where it always is. It's an appropriate variance. Let's see. In terms of the five percent landscaping, we've got the landscaping that's required in the ordinance. We've just put it to the perimeter where we think it serves a gateway function, serves other purposes. If we try to do it internally, what happens is you wind up doing it at the corners of the building, and that loses the internal visibility as people are making these corners around the building. And as you all know, these are common areas in which there are cars going in various different directions, pedestrians going from fuel pumps to buildings. So we've found historically that landscaping in those locations, while it is aesthetically nice, creates more safety issues than they're worth. So my recommendation that you give the variance to that five percent. We've got the total amount of landscaping that we need, I think, where it's appropriate for the site. We've got this quote-unquote sidewalk width around the building. This is clearly not what the ordinance was talking about in terms of sidewalks, which are pedestrian ways from A to B. This is more of an architectural feature. And as you've heard, there are things that go on in the sidewalk. There are bollards at one end, so cars are coming up and you don't want people jumping back as they're seeing the car coming. You've got trash receptacles along the building. So this ten-foot dimension, I think, is a very appropriate and safe and comfortable dimension in that area. And while it's a variance from a sidewalk, it really isn't that. Lighting, I think, is inherent to the use, and as I said, it's a very complicated set of movements with the corrections to the edge and the respect for the residential property that was testified to. I think additional lighting on the site is very appropriate. For all of these, I'm sorry, there's one more. Oh, we added the fence. I think the board-on-board fence is appropriate because that's going to have a sound, that sound didn't affect it, I'm sorry. A solid fence is better than a board-on-board fence because of the sound attenuation that will occur. Eight-feet was something that I suggested, and like you guys did it too, but I think that's very appropriate for residential midstore. As the gentleman suggested, if I could vote on this, bring the fence a little bit further forward because you will get headlights weak as people are coming in that entrance. So while it may be aesthetically pleasing to end it at the house, I think if you bring it out a little bit further, it's actually going to provide a better protection for the residents. So I would urge the board to allow it to come forward into a front yard and add that to our variance. In terms of detriments, as I said, I don't think there are any accruing from the variances on the site in terms of the overall neighborhood. They're simply appropriate to fit this particular use on this particular site. As far as I'm aware, I'll just take two minutes and then I'll-
All right, good. I'll take it.
We're good? Okay.
Yeah.
I think it's very appropriate, you've heard from everybody, that we want on either side, and that the indoor signs is really serving the motor and public on the other side. What I would point out, it was suggested that there aren't any large signs in this corridor. Firestone has an Eword sign, we're not going anywhere near what they have. And in terms of the advertising, the actual Wawa words and logo are comparable in size to the Bed Bath and Beyond sign itself. What we are adding is pricing, and that is different than the other signs in the corridor. But it's not different than other signs in your community, at the BP, the Valera, the Gasorama. Where you can have gas stations in your community, they have comparable signs to this, with a logo that goes with the company at the top, the prices with two poles. I think what's before you with this application is more aesthetic, if they've gone to the point of putting the stone base and nicer materials throughout the signs. I think if this community has recognized that gas stations are different, and you've heard from the applicant that it's a lower end, that it's smaller to accommodate some of the work concerns, but as gas station signs, it's consistent with what you have in your neighborhood. And spanner, I would simply say, I think it's worth putting the word on it. The red banner is an architectural feature, it's part of creating visual interest. I don't think it's going to cause any harm to have the four letters on it. It gives an appropriate accommodation for this particular user, and it doesn't cause any hitch from an offsite. It's an architectural feature and I think it just makes it better. So that's the short version.
Good job. Okay, so right now, is there any other questions from this board right here?
No.
Okay, seeing none, I think we're going to be able to do this. Anyone from the public care to speak again on this subject, any questions from the public? Please come up, you can state your name and address and-
And it's questions or comments?
Yes, I'm sorry. Questions or comments? Okay, go on once, yeah, please come on up, yeah, absolutely.
Probably don't have to come up here to ask it.
No, but for the record, they need your name and address and the whole-
My question again is, I'm Wally Peterson from Springfield, and I was up here before. Is this going to continue to another night or are we done with-
I think we're going to be able to do it tonight and save a trip just because it seems like all their testimony is over. The questions here seem to be done, so this probably was a little quicker than I anticipated myself, so.
The only other comment I have is that despite everything that they're willing to do and certainly we appreciate it, I still think, you know, that we're going to look at property values that aren't worth what they were before because of this Wawa being next door to our residential will probably be, I don't know what's going to happen with the renters that are in there, especially the one next door. But we certainly do appreciate the efforts, that thoughtfulness, even though I think we're going to, things, there's going to be a few changes, but different, it'll be different.
Hopefully, hopefully the accommodations make it an easier transition, so hopefully we can-
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Seeing none, I guess we can vote on this.
Want to go through many variances and-
Yeah, you want to go over that, yeah.
So I think I have nineteen variances here. You know, if I don't mention one in the context of this vote, but it was brought up, that should, I would consider the board to also be voting on that. But I have, Ms. Price, please correct me if I'm wrong.
Can you talk a little louder?
Yeah, all right.
Sorry. The building, the setback exceeds the maximum front yard setback from, I guess, all front yard setbacks. Is that correct?
Prevailing.
Right.
Correct.
The purpose to have an accessory structure in a non-residential zone, to have accessory structures in the front yard. The height of the accessory structure is twenty-five feet where fifteen feet are permitted. A trash and recycling enclosure located in the front yard, so Morris Avenue. The five percent interior portion landscaping requirement for parking areas. The maximum sidewalk width of ten feet where six, six feet is permitted, exceeding the foot candle illumination levels. Also have setback of thirty-seven point five feet in the rear yard, whereas a fifty-foot setback is required to a residential zone. An eight-foot, eight-inch tall refuse area where six-foot tall is permitted.
The enclosure.
Enclosure, sorry.
Right.
About sure if I covered this, four of the front yard refuse enclosure as well. Back. For the buffering fence between the residential property, that would be a fence in the front yard. Also fence height variance for an eight-foot tall fence where six feet are permitted and variance, I'm not sure if it's required for a solid fence instead of board-on-board.
It's not required. A solid fence is permitted.
Solid fence is permitted. Then there's the sign variances. One, you have two freestanding signs, whereas one is permitted. Then you have freestanding sign area variances. The proposed sign adjacent to Morris Turnpike is fifty-nine point seven five square feet. The sign adjacent to Morris Avenue is forty-nine point eight seven square feet, whereas twenty-four square feet is a permitted area of freestanding signs in the zone. There is a depth of freestanding sign, whereas two feet is permitted and you have three-point two feet in depth. There is, if the spanners are considered wall signs, then you're permitted wall signs on each facade facing public streets, or you'd allow, be allowed to have three, you would have four, so you needed a variance for that. There's no longer a variance for the directional signs since they do not have advertising.
Mr. First, there's also a variance for the height of the freestanding sign on Morris Turnpike.
Right.
And I have something else, too.
Yeah. Height of the wall sign, freestanding sign.
And the trees, the four trees along Cleveland Place that are within the two feet of the right-of-way, technically it's a variance.
Okay. And there's also a variance for the height of the facade signs as well?
Five and a half rather than five.
And Alex, to check the directional out of Cleveland to Chipotle.
We'll go through conditions after.
We might be here next month.
Yeah, no, I mean, thank God we have transcripts for this one. The conditions that I have and the board's reckoning that I missed, please let me know. That the lights will be aimed away from the dwelling. Residential side shielding will be provided to reduce foot candles to satisfaction of board engineer. That deliveries will be, tractor-trailer deliveries will be restricted between the hours of after ten PM before six AM. But that will, the applicant can apply administratively to the zoning officer if the adjacent lots are no longer in residential use to have that restriction lifted. That there, the applicant implement the improved buffer and landscaping plan that was shown as exhibit A three and include the eight-foot fence, a solid fence along the residential or along the property side with the buffering, landscape buffering along the residential side, and that be extended closer to the street to try to block the sweep of turning headlights, but I guess without blocking site triangles. That can be done to the engineer's satisfaction. Let's see. I have that the logos will be removed from the directional signs and those signs will be reduced to three square feet in area, that the pylon size, sign will be reduced to eighteen feet, that the no CO shall be issued for the site until the traffic light And also that you will provide information to the satisfaction of the board engineer regarding any interference between the Chipotle driveway and any of the site's driveways.
And compliance with all conditions set forth in the letters of our professionals?
Compliance with all conditions of, to the professional satisfaction of all conditions set forth therein, and typical conditions requiring payment of escrow, posting of bonds, outside agencies, compliance with all rules and regulations.
I think I have one other maybe variance, and I'm not sure if it's a real variance or not, but because the canopy is higher than permitted, the lighting is technically, even though the source is not visible, the lighting is technically too high. So I think that's a technical variance.
Okay.
We'll add that to the list.
Okay.
And also to note for the board that it would be, is an application for preliminary final major site plan approval.
Okay.
You earned your money today.
Any other- Any other discussions, was there any other questions?
Yeah, I just have, there was, I did have a comment in my letter about the development fee ordinance.
Oh, yes, and the specific condition that this is subject to the non-residential- Development fee ordinance and payment thereof as a condition of approval.
Can you repeat all that?
Read it back from the transcript. I'm sorry?
Okay. Any other questions before we move forward?
Okay.
You can move it.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve application nine dash 2017 dash S, 2017 Cleveland Springfield LLC for preliminary and final site plans and multiple variances and conditions outlined by our board attorney.
I'll second that, and I just want to add, you guys did a wonderful job really outlining everything. I'll be one of the better ones in the 10, 12, 13 years.
Wait, I'm going to say to the client, where is that client?
Coming from Mr. Tiger, that's like, woo. Was there a second?
I said.
You did, okay. So roll call, please.
Ms. Wazowski? Yes. Mr. Tiger?
Yes.
Mayor Sam Poulis?
No.
Deputy Mayor Vasallo?
Yes.
Ms. Saraceno?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Benigno?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schneider?
Yes.
Chairman Fernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, what's that?
Adjourned.
Yes, our next meeting will be December 11th, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.